On Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. We apologize for the delay. We have a couple of members missing. One for an emergency, the other one work obligation. So we're starting a little late and we appreciate everyone waiting. The first thing on our agenda is our minutes from January fourth, two thousand seventeen. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
If so, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January fourth, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second.
Okay. Any corrections? Okay. So all in favor to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have our visitors' comments section, and we have visitors today. And we're happy to have them. Yes. So I'll go with the order. Did you sign in to the?
I did.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we're gonna start with Rich.
Okay, first of all, I'm Rich Demeraki, and I've been listening to some of your meetings and talking to Chris Martin, the town accountant. And I'd just like to give you some of my thoughts and feelings about the issues regarding the school in the town as far as the accounting goes. I mean, I am a CPA. I've audited towns before. I've produced financial statements. I've produced annual reports. So I, I usually know what I'm talking about, usually. So I did give you two, two documents, and I think you're somewhat familiar with the town's audited financial statement. If you go on the town's website, they have eight years of financial statements. And I was gonna make a recommendation that you go through the financial statements, but after I went through it, that's not what I'm gonna recommend to you. The, the financial statement for June two thousand sixteen is sixty-five pages long. And it's very confusing, very complicated, and I'm a CPA. I prepare those financial statements. So what I did, I just printed two pages that you may have already seen, and these are two pages that you should be concerned with. One of them is Schedule of Revenue and Expenditures, Non-Major Governmental Funds. And it has, it lists the funds that are in question at the town meeting. So it shows you school lunch revolving fund, school choice program, state special education. So if you look at the town's annual report, audited report every year, you will at least see the beginning balance, revenues, expenditures, and ending fund balance. So there should be no reason why you are not at least somewhat up to date in knowing the balances. The second sheet from the report is basically just from the footnotes. And it's, it shows the auditor required to list any major funds that have deficit balances. And they, they briefly described the funds that we're talking about. So again, you should at least look at those two pages. Now, I don't know if you, have you seen the town's management letter?
I haven't personally, but I, I have these conversations, you probably remember, from previous discussions in front, at the town meeting and other meetings. This is the year ending two thousand sixteen.
Correct, correct.
That's basically the year where, as far as I know, we were invited to have a conversation with the auditor when we saw some of the, these details.
Right.
Yep.
Right. Now, when the outside auditor does their financial statement, they're required to do a management letter. And that's a separate document, and it has some information about the school department. So you should always get copies of the management letter each year that applies to the town. So I have some of those documents, but you should ask the town for the June two thousand sixteen management letter for any information that applies to the school.
Yes.
Now, here's an older one, and I'll just briefly tell you what it says about the school and the town. It says, "The town and the school department have not established formal procedures to reconcile general funds revolving in grant account balances and activities maintained by the school department to the activity in the general ledger. The reconciliation of subsidiary records to the general ledger would be considered a control activity as defined above." And it says, "We recommend that the school finance director work with the town accountant to reconcile subsidiary account balances," those are your balances, "and activity to the general ledger detailed posting on a monthly basis. All variances and reconciling items should be identified and adjusted with adequate explanations." So if you look at the, the management letter, you should have up-to-date information about what the auditor is saying. And lots of times towns, mostly towns, kinda hide this management letter because some take it as a personal affront that they're not doing their job. But as far as the auditors are concerned, they're really a list of improvements, and they're gonna help on internal control. So that's a document you should get every, every year. I don't know if you've done that.
I think we, we have that one, right? This year's, at the very least.
I have two thousand and thirteen, and fifteen, I'm working on getting fourteen and sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen is out already.
Okay. So that's actually one of the things that we now realize that we may not have been receiving consistently, so we're gonna be receiving that. And we don't, to your point, we don't really take anything personally. We don't really see it as an attack on anything that we do because unless we see that type of information, we can't really take action. So that's why at the town meeting, I think we suggested the same thing, that there are some things that we need to fix and we need to create a formal process that allows us to connect and make sure that everything is balanced. And we're hoping that going forward, we're gonna be able to do that.
Right. But another suggestion I have is that the school committee have a seminar or class for lasting one to two hours, being taught by Chris Martin. Because a lot of municipal accounting systems are similar and different at the same time. So it, it's not that helpful to take an outside class in budgeting, although that is helpful. But I think you should have a class being taught by Chris Martin. He should show you the general ledger. He should show you all of the school accounts. He should show you the special revenue accounts. He should explain to you what he does when your warrants are prepared, how they get posted to the, to the town's accounts. So I've heard a lot what the school side does and what the town side does. I mean, you have to have an understanding of what the town side is and what it means. So I think it'd really be helpful if you get an understanding of how the town processes your information. That would, I think that'd be very helpful. Another thing you might consider is to have Scanlon come to your school committee and explain to you the procedure back and forth between the school and the town. Now, Scanlon has already done some auditing work on the school accounts. That's part of their job when they produce the financial statement for the town. So there's two things you could do, there are two ways to look at it. Either Scanlon has all the information already, or he may have to do some additional audit work to determine what the proper procedure is. So the cost could be zero, probably up to one or two thousand dollars. If, if they have to come in, he may say, "Well, we have it all documented. We, we, you know, it'll be one meeting. We could discuss with you exactly what the issues are, and this is what you have to do." Or he may say, "Geez, you know, that's not in the scope of our work. It'd be an extra project, but we're willing to do it." But I think it's worth it to have them do it. Another consideration that you might look at is your business manager, the, the company you use. How detailed is your contract with them? Does that contract say they are responsible to make sure the detailed subsidiary accounts you have agree to the town records? I mean, is that in their contract? So you have to specify who is responsible. Now, what Scanlon would do, if they do come in, they would document right from here what has to be done, who has to do it, when it has to be done, what controls are in place to make sure all entries are recorded properly. So that's something to consider.
Rich, do you have a lot more?
No, I've got one more. The last one I have, a couple of weeks ago, Jim asked, he was talking about hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Where did it go? Do you recall that, a couple of weeks ago? And basically, I'll just give a quick example if I could. If, if you had a school budget, let's say it's ten thousand dollars. You had two accounts. You had telephone for ten thousand, you had supplies for ten thousand. That's your total budget. Let's say at the end of the year, you were underspent on one, two thousand, and overspent on the other two thousand. So you got eight thousand in one account, twelve in the other. They totaled the budget. Now, if you send a notice down to the town, let's, you look at the account that's underspent two thousand, and you say, "Gee, let's take that two thousand, transfer it to the school lunch program." Okay, Chris Martin will not do that. It, you, you can't do that because you don't have any money left in your general school budget. You've used it all. So you may think you've made a two thousand dollar entry, but you can't because you don't have the money to do it. So where that hundred seventy-eight thousand dollar went, it depends on what year you're talking about. Because if, if you had some money left over in your general school budget, you could have made a transfer to the school, uh, school lunch program. I mean, that could've been one year. Another year, maybe the, maybe it was on your side. The transfer didn't get, you know, the information didn't get to the town. So that could've been a reason for a second year. You know, a third year, the town could've made a mistake. You sent the entry down there, and the town didn't make the entry. So each year is kind of a different, could be a different reason. But if you have any money left over in your general fund at the end of the year, that ends up in free cash. So if you have any free cash at the end of the year, that could be transferred to the school lunch program. And if you don't do that, it goes to the free cash. It's, it's lost. So I don't know over the last five or six years if you've had any surplus in your general.
We, we have transfer funds to, to make up for the gaps. And that's something that we're looking into. Beyond that, I don't think there was any free cash coming out of the, the school budget. Basically, we're at the, at the school budget. We spent within the school budget. And that's part of the, part of the conversation that we're having to be able to find out between those two different ledgers, where we are losing the connection and how we are ending up with that deficit. And we're gonna have some other conversation this evening around the lunch program too, so.
Right.
But thank you for, for the conversation.
Yeah, but I thought some of these, you know, they might help you at least understand a little bit more of what's happening.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Rich. Thanks for coming.
You appreciate the time you took to do all of this research.
I try to help out a little bit.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too.
Thanks. We have Robin next.
I don't mind waiting if you've got somebody after me.
They're in the part of the agenda, so they're here in new business.
Then.
It's very nice of you, though, Robin. Thank you.
It's all right. I was told to ask if you have started, if you have started on setting the calendar for the next school year and if you were going to be looking into any of the faculty input on that calendar, involve them in any way. And we do understand that it's a courtesy that you set the calendar in that set, but I was asked to ask that question.
Yeah. I, as far as I know, actually, we do have that conversation with faculty. We don't just sit and create the calendar. That's my understanding.
Okay, well, I was told to ask that question. Chris?
No, actually, that's, that's good. We should, we're gonna make sure that we ask that question when the calendar comes up, whether or not that conversation happened. It's a good reminder. But just so that you know.
You are gonna.
What we think, based on the conversations that we've been having, is that that conversation has taken place and we're getting input.
All right.
Yeah. But thank you.
If I may?
Please do.
Uh, we've had the initial conversation at the leadership team around pressures on the calendar as related to the holidays as they fall, but also the new school building. So we had our first conversation at the last leadership meeting. I meet biweekly with Kristen Nagliari, and we were not able to meet the last time, so it was on the agenda. So I will be meeting with her, I believe, Thursday, and we will talk about ways to get staff input into the process.
Also, one of the concerns was, and I'll give it to you, it revolved around parent-teacher conferences. And I think that was it. She was concerned about, like, the holidays and parent-teacher conferences. And, you know, if the staff would have input, because these are questions I was told. The next one I was told to ask about budget, and if you've had, if you've started on the budget, are you going to involve the faculty in that? And would you consider inviting the faculty to any of the workshops that you hold amongst yourself so they're more aware? I can't guarantee what kind of a response you'd get from faculty, but it would be nice if you opened it and invited faculty into any of the workshops. People seem to be more aware since, because of the cuts that happened this past, for this school year. And I'm not sure if, I'm hoping that their involvement will carry through, and they'll wanna be more a part of what's going on. But just budget and a way that maybe you could involve staff in that more.
Yeah, we don't, we don't see why not, but let me just take that one step at a time. One is that anybody, including our faculty members, they're always invited. They're always welcome in, at these meetings, just like, you know, you. If they would like to share their thoughts, ideas, suggestions, we're always open to that.
Meetings are posted.
Yeah. So as far as the workshop, we actually have been talking about having a broader involvement. In fact, I don't think our conversations just included, you know, faculty. We were thinking about having some meetings where we can get input from the community members, from parents, from others. I wouldn't be lying if I said we know exactly how we're gonna gather that information, but we are trying to truly make this an open process. At the end, you know, whatever we hear is gonna be input, and that's gonna inform how we put the budget together. But we have to decide when that's gonna happen. The first question, yes, we did start thinking about the budget. What we wanna do first of all, and that's coming next, not next week, the week after. We're gonna, we're gonna look at the strategic plan because at the end, just whatever we do should align with our strategy. That's the way we are looking at it. And, and there are certain things currently in our strategic plan that we might have already accomplished, done. So the expenditures may shift to other things, or we, there may be some things that we decided not to do at this point in time. So we're trying to see where we are, what pieces of the current strategic plan, which is only a couple of years old, still, are still intact, and then what else we need to add to it. Once we're there, we're gonna be able to align what type of budget we're looking at with the strategic plan that we have at hand. And we did not do that yet. It's gonna be done in a couple of weeks. We're gonna be talking about strategy. In fact, tonight, you're gonna, if you, if you stay, you're gonna be hearing some conversations around strategy. That's the reason why we made it a standing item, so that it just, you know, whatever conversation we have, it just forces us in a way to keep our conversations aligned with our strategic vision. Does that help? Does it answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And I, I think, I think we all appreciate that, you know, you, you came here to share all that, and please don't stop. I'll tell you something. Sometimes we think that we heard and understood something, and that may not be the case. We might just, you know, do a few of those things, or we may understand and try to initiate some of those things, and one or two may fall out. It's not intentional. It never hurts us to hear whatever thoughts and ideas you have. So please, you or anybody else who would like to come and share their ideas, just please. Please let.
I will share that.
Those folks know that. They're always welcome here.
I will.
Thank you, Robin.
You will.
So I guess we don't have anybody else under the visitors' section, but we're gonna have them on our agenda. Is that what you said, Cheryl? Okay, good. So we're not really overlooking our participation here. Great. Next item is our student representative. Annabelle, what do you have for us here?
So we're gonna throw it back way to December.
Good.
So Pachillion was December third, and there was a good turnout of people. It was really fun. Music was nice and everything. Everyone really enjoyed themselves. And.
Okay. I think you're, you're good if you can speak up a little bit. So, thank you. Good.
Um, recently, the student council has been planning Spirit Week. And as of right now, the days are Mondays PJ Day.
Yes.
Well, hopefully, it's not a snow day again. That's what always happens. PJ Day at our house, but you know. Tuesday is twin slash character day. Wednesday is USA slash camo day. Thursday is retro slash occupation future day. That's a new one that we're throwing in.
What is that?
And occupation, like, future, like, whatever you wanna do.
Oh, okay.
I guess I could throw on a lab coat and a stethoscope and be a doctor. I guess that's how it works.
And Wednesday was cam?
USA and camo day, yeah. And then Friday is winway day with the pep rally. And that is February thirteenth through seventeenth. And then all the activities that were planned, it seems like it's gonna be really fun.
I was that one. I'm coming for the occupation.
Why? What do you wanna be when you grow up?
I don't know. That's, that's exactly where I was going. I'm gonna figure something out, okay? I have a month.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Um, so the whole club's been really busy lately. For the holiday season, there was a sort of secret Santa program that we did for foster children, and everyone in the club kinda chipped in to donate all the kid, things on the kids' wish lists. Initially, we had four kids that we took on, like, just their wish list, but everyone was, like, so willing to, like, help out and stuff and donate that we actually took on two more kids.
Oh, nice.
Very nice. So that everyone was, like, really happy to see, like, that everyone had, like, donated something. And just, when she, like, walked in to, you know, drop off everything, there was, like, bags and bags of stuff, and everyone was, like, really happy.
That's cool.
Yeah. The whole club's also planning to have members participate in the leprechaun plunge, uh, March eleventh at Brennells'.
Leprechaun lunch?
L-.
Plunge.
Plunge.
Plunge, okay.
It's like cold water. You're jumping in. Yeah. At Brennells Marina to raise money for a charity of their choice. At the last meeting, there was a vote to figure out what charity we're gonna donate to, so we should know by the next meeting, which is tomorrow. And the Carnation fundraiser that we usually do is also gonna be, start planning tomorrow. And the Grumpy Theater Group, staying room only. They'll be performing Cyrano de Bergerac. It's like a, yeah, Cyrano de Bergerac, yeah, it's like spinoff of that. It should be a really fun show. It's April sixth, seventh, and eighth at seven PM at East Meadow, and then April ninth at two PM.
Say it one more time.
April sixth, seventh, and eighth at seven PM, and then April ninth at two PM.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And then the ESAC work groups. At the last meeting, they were all wrapping up the final projects and presentations and letters for.
Can you tell us what ESAC is?
Um, the State Student Advisory Council.
Okay.
They meet once every other month. So, uh, not next month, but in March, there should be a meeting for, like, final, the final touches on everything so that we can distribute those projects to all the schools. Yeah, and hopefully that happens. And then, oh, so this Saturday, there was the mock AP English exam. And it went really well despite the fact that a lot of kids didn't feel very well about the exam itself, like, how they did necessarily. It was really good because a lot of kids were able to see, like, what strategies we had talked about in the class that worked and what strategies they might not have had as much time to, you know, invest in that one. And like, what they need to work on specifically so that they can be successful in taking the exam. And how to use, utilize their time efficiently so that they can get prepared to pass the exam in May. And it was a really helpful session for all the students participating, and it was definitely something that we should continue to have in the future.
Cool. And whatever you did this Saturday does not reflect on your final grade? This was just preparation?
Yeah.
Good. That's very good.
It'll be scored by, um, we should get it back in a few weeks. It'll be scored by, like, actual, I mean, actual people, but like. Yeah, and then we should get back the scores and improve on it.
Are there any other Saturday activities for those, or?
Um, yeah, there's three. This is the second one. Uh, I don't remember when the third one is, but.
Are, are they all exams or tests?
No, this one was the mock AP exam. The last one was talking about strategies for the essays, and we haven't talked about it with the next one.
Cool. Is that it? Well, thanks a lot. It was quite a bit. Thank you for sharing. If you have to leave, as always, feel free. Anytime. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Annabelle. Thank you.
Okay. Then moving on to new business, we have two items that need our vote. We're gonna start with extended day support staff. Carol. Is the microphone good enough to?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm sure you received in your packet the information regarding my request for new posting. So on Section one, Chapter seventy-one B of the general law, they had an amendment that highlighted the need for students on the autism spectrum to have access to social skills and social interactions. And so we have, as you know, several students in the district that qualify under autism. At the high school level, there are some that are in need of structured social skills type program where they, it's interest-based and where they can practice some of their social pragmatics. One particular student had in the past outside programming. We were able to arrange that this year because there wasn't a peer group for that. So my recommendation is for us to start one here so that we always have that opportunity for students to be able to practice those social, social pragmatics in a safe learning environment. I'm looking to have a posting for an extended day staff, support staff, who would help facilitate and encourage some of the other students to participate. We currently have three students who are interested in, in participating in this, you know, structured social setting.
Any questions for now?
So is this an, this is an after-school position?
Yeah.
Once a week, I see here?
Once a week.
An hour?
For an hour.
And how are we paying for that? How are you paying for that?
There was already a budget line.
There's already a budget line.
There was already a budget line for this, and this is staying within that budget line.
That wasn't being used anywhere else?
Uh, it was supposed to be used for an outside provider, and we were unable to. Uh, it was supposed to be used for an outside provider, um, and we were unable to, um, secure an outside because you wanna have a peer group, and there wasn't, um, a peer group for, um, us to be able to have the children join.
What is the, who sets the pay for this? Is this a stipend?
Yes, we're...
Is that through the contract? The key contract?
Yeah, we're using, well, it's, it's, can be a teacher, but we had looked at, um, it was, I think, fifteen dollars an hour was the stipend that, um, support staff received from the summit.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, sorry.
Sorry.
With all these responsibilities, it seems as though the person needs to be, uh, trained. Especially, I mean, I mean, I'm looking at things like, um, acts as a mandated reporter. I mean, that's not something that so, a layman could do.
Correct.
Well, I know that's, I understand that. I'm talking about somebody maybe on the outside that, that applies for a position like this. It's somebody that is, is gonna need some skills.
They would post internally.
We would post it internal, you know, so that we would get someone that was, you know, has already worked with students with disabilities.
Mm-hmm.
Are students get home? Or are they parent pickup?
Parent, yeah, parent pickup.
So we're not sure whether it's gonna be internally filled, or we're gonna have to do it outside?
Yeah, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that it's an eternal fill. Um, because, you know, we have more and more, you know, at the high school level, more and more kids are gonna be moving up, and, you know, we're gonna need the opportunity to help these kids practice, you know, these skills in a non-instructional, you know, type setting. Pulling them out of academics to do this, you know, where are you going? You know, they don't want that stigma that they're, you know, being pulled out for.
Who's doing this? Is the person doing the position expect to do the planning for the students?
So I think some of that is gonna come in through the, the, um, social workers because all of these students have, um, time with the social workers, so that it's gonna be a collaborative effort. But we wanna make it interest-based, you know, so that, you know, that, because if you, if it's not interest-based, that you're not, you're not gonna get that, you know, communication skills out of them, you know.
Is, are we doing this, and I'm gonna ask very directly, are, is this because there is a requirement in regulation around it that we're doing it? Or is this really aligned with a target that if we do this, then we can, we, we are expecting these certain outcomes? And that's, that's the reason why we're doing it?
So we're doing it for two reasons. One, legally, we're required, you know, by the law, because they lack in social pragmatics in their ability to interact and join groups and, and, you know, participate in social situations, they need the opportunity to practice. And, um, having an opportunity where it's safe, and there's someone there that can help guide the, um, interactions.
Is this already in the student's IEP?
Yes.
It's already in there, so we do have not been given it since...
Correct.
The start of school, and that's...
Not from lack of trying.
Okay. Well, it's about time, I guess, then. Um, is there any other question?
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
Carol. Just before that, uh, do we have anything else with Carol this evening? Is this it? So, um, I apologize, I didn't, uh, send anything to you to put it in there, but I just wanna make sure that we recognize everything that you and the, uh, special ed, uh, team, uh, you guys have been doing. Um, we're gonna be, we may have an opportunity to mention it as we get into strategy, but, uh, one of the things that we did, or tried to do, uh, last year was to create that structured learning program. Uh, two things. One is that it was really, uh, good to hear that we were able to, uh, attract one student back here based on what they have seen, uh, in our school district. But also equally or more, uh, pleasing was a letter that was sent, uh, to the school district thanking, uh, everyone who was involved and making their decision much easier so that they could comfortably send their child back to Granby. And these are some of the things that we do not really talk about, so thank you, and please extend our thanks to the whole team.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I actually, Cheryl shared it with me, and I shared it with them.
Great, yeah. So you have a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to support the extended day support staff job description.
I'll second that, okay. Any more discussions? All in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Carol.
Thanks very much.
Okay, the next one is continued participation in school choice two thousand seventeen eighteen.
Okay, so, uh, this vote usually takes, uh, place later in the school year, um, but, um, in discussing, I think, some ideas around enrollment, um, and, uh, perhaps a goal around the strategic plan around enrollment, I thought, um, to have the discussion now about, um, Granby's willingness to continue participating in school choice, um, would be appropriate.
That's a big one.
I know. Yes.
And with, the, the only thing you're expecting tonight is to have this vote to allow us to get going, is that...
Sure, I think, um, you know, as we discuss enrollment, um, and school choice, I wanted to get it on the agenda because, um, if school committee would like more information, um, some historical data, I'd be happy to bring that forward. Um, it, it just, it was sparked because of our conversation about, uh, potentially a goal, uh, for us around enrollment.
And hopefully this also allows us to spend more time on finding the best way to reach out to those potential students who may find what they're looking for in our district. And when we do too late, then it doesn't really always give us that time, so thank you for that. So is there a motion to approve our continued participation in school choice program for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year? I'll make that motion. Thank you.
I'll second.
Would you like to second that? Thank you. Uh, any questions? Any other discussion? No, we need that. Yeah, we need that, absolutely.
Yeah, it's still a revenue for us. I think the question is, um, the, the change in, uh, percentage and ratio. But it still, um, does subsidize a substantial part of, uh, the programming here.
Yeah. And that is absolutely true, there is that revenue side. But what, you know, uh, we saw in the, in, in the example of structured learning program, we're hoping that all these students will want to come to our district because they are finding something that is important to them. And again, just, I, you know, we all believe that we have those things. It's just that maybe we were not able to, uh, promote, uh, advertise what is in our district well enough. Hopefully, you know, if we start early, we can do that, uh, this year. Okay, so with that, all in favor to approve the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, next we are going to, uh, into a conversation on dual enrollment, uh, with HCC. Or is it dual enrollment?
Well, I invited HCC, I think, to, um, you know, participate certainly in the discussion. Uh, one of the things that, um, I have discovered, um, through my entry plan, um, that I wanted to talk about a little bit earlier because it, it certainly, um, uh, in my mind, um, is part of our discussion around enrollment and understanding why our students may be choosing, uh, different avenues and making different choices. Um, one of the things that I discovered was that dual enrollment has sort of grown into, um, a different program than I think it was intended originally. Um, and, uh, that, um, it's the result of a lot of different factors. Uh, some of those being, uh, the discussion about a difficult budget, um, and so parents looking at the type of programming that, uh, we may be able to offer here. Um, and then maybe even some misperception about what the program actually is and what the intent was. So I asked John here today to talk about, um, where dual enrollment, that kind of early college experience conversation started, so he can give you a little bit of, uh, history there. And I asked HCC to talk about their program, um, and what their goals for the program are. And then I hope to have a conversation about how we can come together to really define what it is through policy that we believe, uh, dual enrollment should be, and how we can work with HCC as partners so that they are providing our students with the opportunity to supplement their experience here in high school and necessarily, not necessarily to supplant their experience, um, which is, I think, what we're seeing, which, and by that I mean, we're seeing an increase in students who are taking a hundred percent of their coursework at HCC, and that didn't make a lot of sense to me. So I, I started asking the question, so that really this is the beginning of the conversation, um, so that we can really explain, um, for each other what we believe the program to be, what the benefits are, and, um, then really, um, begin to have that conversation about how to write that into policy so that we're clearly explaining that to our families and our students, so they know what to expect.
Right, so, um, you know, I, I think that this is a good time to really start, you know, discussing policy around dual enrollment. You know, I shared with Cheryl earlier today, I sent her an email back from October of two thousand and fifteen when, um, you know, Judy and I started the discussions around dual enrollment. And I said that, um, you know, we really don't have any type of clear-cut policy, um, school committee policy, and really handbook language policy, though we've put something in there, um, there is a clause in the handbook, and I just, I don't know if that ever went in front of the school committee. Now granted, I can share a little bit of the backdrop to dual enrollment. This is our fifth year here in Grammy Schools that we've had dual enrollment. And, um, when I talked to Judy back in two thousand and fifteen, she was going to check MASC to see if there was anything around dual enrollment, and she said that she couldn't find anything. So that led me to, um, the Massachusetts Department of Higher Education that speaks to dual enrollment and really promoting, um, early college, uh, preparation and readiness for students. So in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, our first year having dual enrollment, at least the records I was able to, um, extract from our guidance department, that we had, uh, one, two, three, we had eight students take part in the dual enrollment program. That's five years ago. Uh, and then, um, in my first year, in two thousand and fourteen, as the principal of the school, we had three students. Now, I remind you, all of those eight students back in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen were seniors. In two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, we went to three students. And then the following year, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, we had four students. And I received a phone call back in the springtime from a parent, um, who said that, um, you know something? I contacted Hoyou Community College, my student is a junior, and, um, and the student was having some difficulties, um, here at the school. Uh, and then presented me with a plan that really thought at the time, um, that this was really going to help prepare, um, their son to have success in terms of what he or she wanted to do. And time, um, two superintendents ago, I presented it to her, and we granted permission for this one student to go ahead and take part in dual enrollment as a junior. And then, uh, and then at that time, like I said, in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, it was four seniors, one junior. Last year, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, it was, uh, six seniors and one junior. And then last year, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, which is currently, you know, this, this school year, we have, uh, the program's kinda ballooned a little bit, to the point where we have, um, seven seniors and eight juniors who are taking part in the program. So talking to Cheryl, you know, what we like to do is really review the program, really dig deep into the data, see who's partaking in it, see if we can come up with some policy that, um, uh, you know, we've contacted neighboring school systems, for example. Um, both, um, South Hadley and Belgium Town have some policy that limit the number of courses the students can take. They also have policy in place that says that students cannot take, um, classes at, um, at a post-secondary institution if their high school is offering that particular class. Um, so looking maybe in the next couple of months of coming up with policy that will look to, um, you know, sort of, um, put some parameters and some, um, control over the program that's that we're currently offering.
Thank you, John. So what, what has been the, what's the, however the student gets it, is accepted to do this?
Yeah.
If there's been no policy, is it all fall upon you? You simply say yes or no?
That's a great question. So it's a contract that the, um, community college develops with the high school. And, and that comes from, um, uh, you know, the Department of Higher Education, where according to dual enrollment, that there needs to be a contract agreed between the two institutions that speak to, and the, and the state has their own criteria, which is a two-point-five grade point average. Um, and that you have to be a Massachusetts resident, and you have to, uh, you can't have your GED or your high school diploma. So then what happens is that colleges, community colleges, then go into contract with the high schools and develop. And so we have one currently with Hoyou Community College where we have set the bar at three-point-zero grade point average, um, and that's what we've been working off of.
Okay, so just, just to clarify dual. Dual can mean two things. I meant, are they, are they enrolled here, taking some courses and classes here, and then also leave and take a class at HCC? Or are they totally at HCC and not here at all?
Well, and I think that that's where we would like to eventually, you know, look at the program. And if, if it's going to be a dual enrollment program, then the student is considered both a student at Grammy Chamber Student High School and at the, you know, the college that he or she is attending. Right now, for the most part, that the student has basically, as Cheryl mentioned, has supplanted his or her, his or her high school education with a college education, is receiving both high school and college credit.
That doesn't sound like dual enrollment to me.
Correct.
That sounds like college enrollment to me.
Correct.
And so I think that led me to my conversation, um, last week, um, to really, I think, think about what we, what was the intent of dual enrollment. Um, my understanding is that dual enrollment serves a couple of purposes, and I know you're here to speak to it. But, um, you know, when the federal government got involved in dual enrollment, a lot of this was around, um, promoting opportunity, uh, for students that, um, may not have felt that they were college-bound, um, may be the first generation, uh, to be potentially attending college. Um, and so there, there was federal funding, um, that was, um, delivered so that students could have this experience. Um, what it's become, it's become more than that. Um, and, uh, what I, what I see has happened is it's almost become a school choice option. Um, and that, that is, um, problematic, uh, for a couple of reasons. For me, one is that, um, we now have a system of dual enrollment, as John mentioned, that if you're supplanting your entire experience by going to the height, by going to the college, um, we, students here in Granby have to pay for that. Um, so they pay the, uh, fees and the tuition. And, you know, I think it's worth the conversation about what do we believe public school to be? Um, do we believe that public school should be for every child? Um, or do we believe that some of our students, if they can afford it, should be able to go, um, and, and take this, um, college route and also, um, earn their high school credit? So I, I think it's worth the conversation, um, not just here, but also with the community and the families who are involved with dual enrollment. Um, and so I, at this point, I think it's probably a good segue, um, to HCC to talk about what, what they see as dual enrollment and how they're, how they're working with some other, uh, communities, uh, to sort of, uh, dance through this and, and really create some strong systems of support. Because at the end of the day, this really is about providing opportunity for students, um, that they're ready for. Um, and that, um, certainly we have students that are ready for this, uh, ready for a course, ready for two courses. Um, and we do have some students, as John mentioned, that maybe don't fit the mold here and really could benefit from even more coursework. So I think HCC is in a good position to talk about all of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want us to come up?
Please come on over. Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
So I'm Renee Taseda, I'm the Dean of Enrollment Management at Hoyou Community College.
And I'm Jenna Cochran, I'm the Dual Enrollment Coordinator at HCC.
So, um, thank you for that information, uh, that I think aligns with what, with the stats that we have in terms of the number of students that... in terms of the number of students that come to HCC from Granby. Dual enrollment to us means that the student is earning both high school credit and college credit for the same course. So the student is on the Granby Junior/Senior High School books. You're receiving the per pupil revenue from the state for that student. They are taking a class or two classes or their full load perhaps at HCC. And they're earning high school credit and college credit for the classes that they're taking at HCC. So the contract that John mentioned is more with, it's more between the HCC and the student, individual student and the height, and the school. It's signed, it's a, it's signed by the student, the student's parent and guidance counselor and by Jenna. So I'll let Jenna talk about like what she actually goes through with the student and the, the families of the students in terms of how we orient them to college. But Cheryl said it very well in terms of this is an opportunity for some students who may not, this, this environment isn't a successful one for them. They may need enrichment in terms of their academic, they, they may be needing additional, a higher level course. Or they need a, a, a fresh start. So we've seen success in all different types of models. I'm gonna have you talk about your experience with students.
So we work primarily, we rely on a lot of referrals from guidance for the dual enrollment program. So students will often be recommended by their guidance counselor. In many cases, students and families approach the guidance department with information, requesting information and permission to participate in the dual enrollment program. So we do work very closely. I work with the student, their families and the guidance counselor in planning a program, a study at Holyoke Community College that works with their high school schedule, works with the student's personal schedule and their academic needs. So Renee was mentioning the contract that students are required to have filled out. That needs to be signed by their guidance counselor and the student and the parent. And that needs to tell us what types of courses they need to take while they're attending HCC so that they will be fulfilling their high school graduation requirements. As well as in most cases, students are also working towards some sort of college degree, whether it's an associate degree with us or looking towards transferring these credits towards a bachelor degree program after dual enrollment. So we do work very, very closely with the high school in, in terms of planning, in terms of finding out how many courses a student can take and what will work best for the individual student. In some high schools that we work with, they have set policies where a student can take one or two dual enrollment courses and they take the rest of their classes at the high school. Other high schools, because of the rotating schedules, students are required to do all of their classes through a dual enrollment program or no classes through dual enrollment. So with Granby, for the past few years, the students have not had the option to do part-time enrollment with HCC. So they, they've been doing all of their classes with us. This year is the first year that many of the students that are enrolled in dual enrollment are coming back to the high school to fulfill their physical education requirement. So we've built that into their college schedule. But the rest of their courses are done at HCC.
And other classes as well, we have students doing technology, AP courses and so forth. This is our first year having a new schedule and the purpose of going to a cemented schedule was to look at dual enrollment and see if we can, in past years, we had a day one, day two, alternating day schedule. We have a waterfall rotation that really prohibited, you know, those kids from taking part in dual enrollment experience. So eventually that, you know, that was part of the reason going to a cemented schedule, which I'm sure you heard from our counselors.
So going to a cemented schedule actually promoted more dual enrollment?
Sure, because it, basically the waterfall was impossible because your classes would, you could have the first.
So we changed an entire schedule to accommodate fifteen students?
No, externships are, there are a number of reasons that we looked at doing a cemented schedule. One was for dual enrollment, internships, externships, another reason. And there were a number of reasons that we went to that schedule, but dual enrollment was one. Outside classroom experiences for students.
I'm kind of confused between those two suggestions. One is, I thought, one is a rolling schedule. And it makes it difficult for the student to be both in the high school and college. And therefore, that, that was one of the options and I guess a lot of folks took it. But when we have a fixed schedule, I'm not sure why now we have even more students who are going full-time to, to HCC.
Well, I'm not so sure if the fixed schedule has anything to do with more students going full-time, you know, going to the.
No, I guess what I'm, what I was saying is this, if, I, I read this whole thing or heard this whole thing to mean that our intent, at least the original intent, was to supplement certain things that may not exist in our high school by allowing these students to go to HCC, if that is correct. And for some students who may have wanted to do that when we had that rolling schedule, there are some difficulties because, you know, when are you gonna go? The time, the college probably doesn't change, but our timing here changes and therefore there, that, there is that misalignment. And by virtue of that argument or that track of logic, I thought, you know, when we have everything fixed, it would have at least allowed us to say, okay, these are the few classes where the students, yeah, rightfully may have some benefit in going to HCC and supplement their education. Right now, we have, I think you said, fifteen total students that are full-time at HCC.
Not all of them are full-time.
How many of them are full-time?
So we had fifteen students in fall two thousand and sixteen. Right now, for the spring semester that started today, we have thirteen students enrolled. And of those students, I wanna say probably ten, nine or ten are full-time and the rest are part-time.
So these part-time ones are, are in your building, they're here and they're at HCC. And they're taking courses that are not offered here? That's what I'm just confused about. I thought we offered more courses, AP and so on. So how can, how can we not meet their needs that HCC would do it? I, I'm confused by that.
So that's one of the questions I think that I asked. Because when I started to look at what I was seeing in some of the schedules, I think what, what I started to see was, was exactly that. So for instance, students were taking basic English, basic math, which led me to my conversation last week, which said, you know, I think we need to think about what this program really is. Because I'm not sure that having students take a non-credit bearing course at HCC when we offer that course here is in the best interest of the student. And so I think coming together and having that conversation so that we're clear about that, so that when we have a student who is truly ready to take a college level course, they're actually gonna earn college credit for it. And I think bringing the guidance department into that conversation, families into that conversation, HCC and our other dual enrollment partners. And so that we are crafting that understanding that you're not going to take an English class or a math class that is offered here. That we want to use HCC dual enrollment to offer classes that we can't offer here. I think a good example would be, let's say we have a student who has demonstrated some interest in pursuing pre-med coursework and would really like an experience in organic chemistry to sort of test the waters. That is an example of supplementing and enriching our course offerings here instead of supplanting with a general English or a general math. And so that's the conversation I think we need to have about truly dual enrollment and, and the program of study and what that looks like and, and the variations of that so that people are aware.
And I know I'm dating myself, but in my day, it was used as, you earned it as a senior. You know, you earned the right to leave your high school campus by being a student in good standing with a high enough GPA to go take supplemental classes as an enrichment opportunity. And, you know, it was a privilege. It wasn't seen as, oh, I'm gonna get two years ahead of the game. So when I'm out of high school, I'm also graduating with an associate's degree. So it, it just seems like it's morphed into something that's entirely different.
Are all these fifteen students taking college credit? Are they all taking a credit for college courses?
They're taking, they're taking some college credit courses. Some of these students are taking what we call developmental level courses that are not for college credit. So they have to take an entrance exam, a placement test before they can enroll in classes. Based on those results, some students will go right into college level courses. Some students will start off in the developmental level courses where they aren't earning the credit, but they're building the foundations they need to be ready for our college composition course or college algebra.
Which is, which is precisely what an AP course does at the high school level.
Actually, low level than that.
Our general course study.
Developmental is below AP.
So AP would be, AP would be higher.
AP would be higher, AP is more rigorous.
And you know, all, all these conversations, by the way, we really appreciate the opportunity that you guys.
I say that every time I meet with them.
This is not to, we found you now, we can, you know, say whatever we want, just we really appreciate it. But we just, we also want it to be meaningful for the students in a way that really enriches their experience. And the way I always thought of dual enrollment, it was a supplement to whatever we could not offer. There are some kids who decide on their career path, for instance, and they wanna try something that they can never have here. That's one thing. Even pre-med, I, I thought early on for VHS, we had some opportunity with that. Since pre-med is a college degree to begin with, testing the water for a college degree by taking a college degree, I don't know whether that's the path, maybe you can just do it through VHS and see whether or not the concepts. And that's one example. But I'm glad we're having the conversation about AP and other things because the last three, four years that we've been on, on this board, year after year, we had some good conversations. It was virtual high school and it was enriching and supplementing our AP program. And we're trying to do all these things. Then we're saying, okay, so if we have all these things and we all agree that these were beneficial, why are we on the other side providing an avenue that may not be as enriching or as vigorous, at the very least, as these AP classes? And I'm glad that we had this conversation because especially the AP side of it, I had heard before that AP classes tend to be much more vigorous. And colleges actually tend to look at AP, how you scored in your AP exam and they tend to honor that. All that said, is there any alternative option to our collaboration? For instance, you know, having someone here to really teach a class without having the kids leave. And I just, I got my, my little conversation earlier with Cheryl. So it triggered a lot of thoughts. That cannot be the only way. I'm sure in your experience, you are seeing different approaches to different school districts. Maybe we can do something like that. Here's the other thing, we are, you probably know this, we are at a point where we're losing a number of students. Our enrollment is declining. So I have to think that, you know, as the class sizes decline, not only the experience of these students who are completely leaving the district for their HCC education, they are losing that experience. But students who are staying behind are also losing the experience of spending the last two years of their high school life with those people that they care about and they care for. So there are a lot of things, kind of anchoring those individuals in the community and providing what the community can do for them. Again, just I'm glad that we're having this conversation. Probably there are a lot of parameters that we can discuss and see where we can, we can land.
I did have a question about the financial piece of it. So how does that work when somebody goes to HCC?
So we, we have funding, dual enrollment funding through Holyoke Community College. We apply for state grants. We, we also apply for other private foundation grants as well to provide funding that covers the cost of one course per student on a first come, first served basis until the funding's used up. Any additional courses that a student registers for is the responsibility of the student to pay for.
Are these courses, are these courses five days a week or are you on a different schedule? I have been in college for a while.
Usually a three credit class is either two or three days a week. So if it's two days a week, an hour and fifteen minute class periods, three days a week is fifteen minute class periods.
So if a student is taking multiple classes beyond the first class, the, the family is paying for the enrollment? And how does that impact?
It doesn't impact our budget.
We don't pay anything.
Because they, we still receive the chapter seventy funding for those students.
So help me out with this one. As I'm looking at the mass.edu website, I saw something here that says, high school students take college level courses free of charge. And there's an asterisk that says, some institutions may charge a nominal admission fee. So does that mean that your program is slightly different than this one? Or is it because students are enrolled full-time at your institution that now they have to pay more than just that nominal fee? Is that?
Is the, is what you're looking at the Commonwealth Dual Enrollment Partnership?
Commonwealth Dual Enrollment Partnership. What is the Commonwealth Dual Enrollment? It explains what it is and it says, provides opportunities for high school students to take college level courses free of charge. With the asterisk and the example was nominal admission fee, which may be waived, it says.
So that is, so that is the grant that Jenna was mentioning that we apply for?
So there's a grant that supplements it.
And we get a certain amount of money and that's where we, we allow the one course free. We cover through the grant, the one course per student. So there is no admission fee or any other nominal fee that we charge.
So in the conversations that I've had with Jonathan and with HCC, I am excited about their work in other districts and how we can use that work, I think, to establish what the program is here in Granby. So I don't know if you wanna talk a little bit about, you know, our discussion around the individual learning plans, the potential for coursework on, on campus and, and really, I think, a, a, a more long-term vision of, of what dual enrollment here in Granby could look like.
Absolutely. So we had a chance to meet last week, as Cheryl mentioned. And one of the things that I think we've connected on is that we both want Granby to be the school, the school district of choice. And HCC, I believe, can be a partner in that. So my experience in the past, I was in the Colorado Community College system. And I was there for about fifteen years and dual enrollment was one of the pieces that I got to work with. And we had a number of districts, and this happens here in Massachusetts as well, who would start with students when they're in the seventh grade, developing an individualized learning plan. And if that plan shows that they are college bound or that's what their goal is, works on a way to be able to interweave some of those college courses throughout their junior and senior year. So the, the plan is that Holyoke Community College will be a partner from the beginning or whatever school you choose to work with, would be a partner from the beginning, would be working with the guidance counselors and with the students and their families, bringing in the Accuplacer, which is the placement test that we, that we give. Or do, running the students through, oh, I just, I just drew a blank. Your Plan for the Future, Massachusetts Your Plan for the Future, which is the.
College and Career Readiness.
The College and Career Readiness Program. So charting that path for them, giving them the Accuplacer early on. So perhaps like the soph, their sophomore year, they take the Accuplacer. The end of the sophomore year, we can see how many students are, A, have a college course in their plan, B, are ready to take a college course, and C, perhaps there's a critical mass of students who all need this same course as an elective perhaps. And it's not something that we offer. So then HCC or another school, I'm here representing HCC, so I'm gonna say ACC will, would be able to bring that class to you. So perhaps then the first semester of their junior year, you've got fifteen or twenty students all taking the same college course. So perhaps then the first semester of their junior year, you've got fifteen or twenty students all taking the same college course in the first semester. Um, one of the main differences between, uh, an HCC course and an AP course, um, the AP courses are generally taught over the entire year. And the college credit that they earn is based on the high-stakes test that Annabelle, Annabelle was talking about that everybody's practicing for. Their college credit is based only on that exam, um, and the score they get on that. Um, so a one semester course allows them to earn that college credit in one semester. And then, um, for those students who take that one class in the first semester of their junior year, perhaps then also in their plan is a second course or not. Maybe they have some, um, co-op work that they're doing or, um, experiential learning outside of the classroom and it's not a college course. Um, but then that gives the seniors the privilege to then go to campus and take one or more courses in their senior year. Um, so that's a model that works really well. I think it, it kind of, um, eases students into, um, taking college courses. Um, it gets, gets them to test the waters on the rigor for the, of the course, the academic standards, um, just college pacing, um, and how, you know, quickly things move in a college classroom. Generally, when we bring our, uh, so right now, for example, we are teaching, we taught a Spanish class at Holyoke High School. In the spring, we're teaching, uh, anthropology at East Hampton.
Mm-hmm.
And then two classes in North Hampton.
Anthropology and Intro to Health Careers.
And those are all for, so we brought the Accuplacer to the schools, the, all the students tested, actually, I'm gonna roll that back a little bit. We start off with the gu-, guidance counselors and the school asks us to come in and just do a general information session. What is dual enrollment? Um, how is this different than AP? How is a college class different than a high school class? Um, just general information ses- session. And then any student who's interested in possibly exploring further, um, gets invited to an application day. We have them do an application. Um, we, um, then if they, they do their application, we then bring it, the next step is we bring the Accuplacer in. We, um, give the Accuplacer to the students and then we evaluate with, along with guidance, the scores that the students earn. We sit with the student and work, work with them on that and, um, and evaluate their scores and see who is ready for the, to take the course and who might be, you know, more benefit from taking the classes that are at the high school. Or, um, you know, enriching in some other way. We have things like my, my math lab, my foundations lab, which takes the Accuplacer score and says, okay, diagnostic, this is where you need to do some remediation so that you're going to be college-ready. Um, so we can bring something like that in, um, to help even the teachers determine what specifically does this student need to get to college-ready in math or in English. So that's, um, an example of what I think could possibly work on. We are really flexible in terms of, you know, what your needs are. Um, I will say, well, when, when Jenna mentioned this, I think, before, we don't actively recruit for dual enrollment. So it is all through word of mouth. It is all parents and families, um, talking to each other. And when we get a signed contract from the, the student that has been signed by the guidance counselor that says, yes, the student can take a developmental course and can take a full load at Holyoke Community College and specifically, these are the courses they need to graduate from high school, Jenna follows that as closely as she can and works closely with guidance. So we're not, um, like, pushing additional courses on students. Um, if anything, we're trying to reel it back a little bit to make sure that they're going to be successful.
So just to make sure I understood, if the model is such that there's a program at the high school, say, say the ILP,
Mm-hmm.
uh, is that, does it still count as dual enrollment or is, is it, it does?
Well, it depends on if, so, for example, um, Dean, Dean Tech in Holyoke. So we're very involved in the Holyoke Public Schools turnaround plan. Um, Dean Tech, we are working with them to establish pathways, um, like in health careers. So the students in health careers have an ILP from their seventh grade on. Seventh grade says, yes, I'm interested in health careers. This is probably gonna be my trajectory. Um, they take a full sequence of middle school classes in their seventh and eighth grade year and then their ninth grade year. Also, just all at the high, all at the high school. And the colleges involved in primarily just putting out seeds of interest about colleges in your future. If you're interested in healthcare, you need a college degree to do these types of jobs. And so we're just, like, helping the school to engage the student in college and career readiness. Um, and then we come in with the Accuplacer, test the students, see where they are, see where they need some more remedial work. And then, for example, in that health career pathway, in their junior year, is the first year of their college course. So even though they established that pathway in, starting in seventh grade, the junior year is their first, first college course. And that's going to be Health 101, which is Intro to Health Careers.
But, but you don't, but you're not presently doing that here with Granby Junior Senior High School.
The pa-, a pathway like that?
Nothing like that.
Mm-mm.
So for all these, is it word of mouth only that that's happening here for us, for these fifteen students?
Word of mouth with regards to what they're, I mean, they're working for the guidance, family, student, parents, counselor, Holyoke Community College in terms of what they wanna do. For example, we have a student right now who graduated last year, who's a sophomore at Westfield State University, going for a career in criminal justice. Kelly and his son, they knew what they were doing, the track that they wanted.
Yeah.
You know, I'm referring, you know, I'm referring to, uh,
I know, and he'll be through the college in three years.
You know, one, he's got a college in three years. That's what, going back to the community and what's bringing the, you know, the onslaught of, you know, sophomores saying, hey, I'd like to do the same thing. And there's all different reasons why kids are, are doing this. Uh, you know, as Cheryl mentioned, some kids are, were at Wits End in terms of trying to, you know, come up with some programming here for him or her. And so the parent's saying, you know, look, um, and you know, Jenna, we've had a number of conversations around some of the kiddos that we've talked about, seeing if, um, HCC would be a good avenue for them and get them to have more success at school. Number, you know, a lot of reasons, but I think kind of, you know, reeling everything in and looking at what we're doing is our task in the next couple of months.
And I think, you know, to your point, I think the perceptions of what the program is, I think, differ based on families. But word of mouth that I've heard, um, is that, hey, isn't it great? I can go to HCC and earn my associate's degree my junior and senior year. And when you look at the types of classes that the students are actually enrolled in and the likelihood of that happening, it's actually very small, the number of students who actually are enrolled in the coursework to earn an associate's degree. So I think we need to be careful about the perception of the community about what dual enrollment really is. And so it ballooned and, and now I would hate to have students be enrolled in something that they're actually really not ready for and thought that they were gonna earn an associate's degree at the same, you know, simultaneous to a high school diploma, and that's not the case. And I know you do a good job, you know, once you have them, but the perception of the community that that is the norm, I think we need to be really careful about, nor should it be really the desire. You know, um, our students and, you know, they're still our children. Um, and there's a reason for some of the social emotional learning in the program we're doing here. There's, it's important for them to be here, I think, to experience that. Um, and for us to work on the perception of the programming that we have here, you know, our students that have gone on to tremendous four-year schools, um, based on the experience that they've had here, whether it's a supplement, um, with an HCC course or whether they've, they've done AP coursework or whether they've just, um, done some general studies. Um, so I, I think it's worth the conversation because we do have an excellent program here. And so the idea that, um, HCC is something better, um, when in fact it's just something different and something that we want to use to enrich our, our program, um, I think is the direction that I, I'd like to have the conversation around.
And there's a deadline for this, right? You've, you've gotta, don't you?
Well, there is.
Somebody has to decide. So you're, we're under the gun here. So what's our time train to, to come up with something on this? So, cause right now, I, I take it to mean that you and guidance, it's hard for you to tell me, no, my child can't go and do that. So you, you, whether you don't want it or not, think it's better that I stay here. If I wanna do it and I get all the things crossed and dots, you know, I've been done, you have no choice.
No, that's a great, great point. Cheryl and I talked about that on Friday. And, um, I think that whatever we do, that we will look at it, um, so kids that have already started their, you know, programming or like you said, starting to think of a freshman or sophomore is what they wanna do two, three years from now, that we don't pull the carpet from under them. But rather, if we were to do some policy that we look at institution, so it's effective in a class of two thousand and twenty-one, which would be the, um, maybe the grade A class. You know, that's a suggestion that we talked about. Once again, it's ultimately, we, we'll reside with the school committee, but looking at creating some policy that, as Cheryl said, we can keep our kids in our school as well as providing them with a, um, college experience. So it's really a dual, you know, a dual enrollment thing that they're, that they have. That's what we like to eventually get to.
We, we, we have had the feedback, you know, and the concern from families and we recognize it. You know, I have a junior, you know, they thought that, you know, they were gonna be able to have, you know, continue on with their program. So, um, it would not be my recommendation to the school committee that we establish policy that would affect students that are currently juniors going into their senior years. And, and I think we have to be careful about even our sophomores who have, um, been looking toward and hearing about dual enrollment um, and making plans for that with their family. I think we need to be cognizant that they've had those discussions. Um, and so policy, you know, to John's point about when that would go into effect, um, the kind of programming around working with seventh grade students and eighth grade students, creating that, um, individual learning plan um, and the pathways, I think, is, is bigger certainly than saying, you know, we're gonna put this policy in place for July first of two thousand and seventeen.
I, I agree that we can't affect students who are currently enrolled.
Mm-hmm.
I, I'm not so sure I agree that two thousand twenty-one is the date to start either.
I agree.
I, to me, that feels like it's too far out.
Yeah.
And.
Or, or, or the sophomores from my perspective.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cause after having this conversation, having established that there are some, uh, things that we're not really, uh, sure about or we don't think is to the best interest of the students. And if we then say, you know what, let's just let it run for a few more years, I, I, I don't think that, uh, we are doing our job.
I agree.
It's either this or that, and we have to really establish the policy. And I don't think, I mean, I really appreciate your honest, candid, uh, feedback to us that it, it's not, at least based on my reading, it's not the intent of the overall program to begin with to, uh, set up this, uh, community college, uh, graduation program out of high school. I mean, it wasn't that. But we wanna make sure that we work with everyone, and I also appreciate that you said HCC or, or, uh, anybody else. We have to find what is really to, in the best interest of our students. So if we go next year, I can guarantee you there will be another sophomore class that comes and says, hey, you know what?
Yeah, that's right.
You made, made an exception for those before us. There is always a cutoff in policy. Uh, and I completely agree. We don't have to really affect those students who are currently in the program. It's not a retroact-, uh, uh, retroactive policy. But we have to, if we do really believe whatever we're discussing here right now, I think it behooves us to follow that conversation and do whatever is necessary for the kids.
Yeah, and, and I agree, the only thing like Jim goes back is that we're in, in the stages right now of having those discussions with kids and families. And that, um, you know, scheduling's right around the corner, select, course selection sheets, um, this month or early next month. And so all that's going to be happening very soon. Um, and also budgeting and, you know, things that all go into, um, account, you know, when, when we make these decisions. So the only thing is like, then we, with the policy, then we really, I think in the next couple of months, you know, might need to look at, you know, where we wanna go.
Then I say we look at the policy and we finalize it in the next couple of months.
Okay.
And I would just add that I have actually already received some applications for fall two thousand seventeen from Granby students, sophomores that are hoping to do this for their junior year. The families are planning and they're also anxious about the anticipation of change in policy. And they're trying to move more quickly.
So you've already improved all that paperwork? Or done that paperwork here?
Well, I, I, you know, I've let the families know that, you know, dual enrollment's becoming, and then maybe you've been hearing some of it, that it's becoming a, um, you know, it's going to result in some policy, um, and, and that's what you were referring to ladies, that, you know, the school committee might be taking up dual enrollment and that there could be some revisions to the policy as it currently is.
I also think it's important that we, um, we offer something else instead. That, you know, we're not just removing the dual enrollment and then not putting anything in its place. I mean, I like the idea of somebody coming here, somebody coming on campus, still offering, you know, the, the option as, you know, a senior taking college-level courses. You know, I, I don't think we're saying one and done.
And we're not, we're not saying we're doing away with dual enrollment. And going back to that, if, uh, a, a senior is willing to take a class at HCC and that's something that we're not offering here at all, uh, yeah, I think it's the, it's the, uh, definition of dual enrollment. Then we can certainly work and, uh, put something around that and then make sure that those students take advantage of that program. Uh, so I don't think there is, there is any penalty here to those who are not currently in the program. And, uh, who, those who are in the program, all right, whatever, you know, uh, decisions were made, we're gonna honor those. But we have to do whatever is in the best interest of the students, and it seems like there are some alternatives. Seniors are still, uh, uh, able to take advantage of the dual enrollment program. Uh, and, and then we can, we can go from there.
So what I'm hearing is that, um, you would like revision or actually the creation of some policy language around dual enrollment with some revision probably to the student handbook in terms of what that means for expectation. And then a definition of what we talked about in terms of potential, um, development of pathways and a, and a more, um, partnership to, um, really start at a, more at the middle school level to help kids understand and students and families understand what, what the intent is and how to use dual enrollment effectively as part of their overall programming, uh, here in Granby.
And Cheryl, to build on something that you said, to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. Uh, we're talking about the academic side of the program, which is, which is great. But also there is that, uh, social emotional side of it, that a student who is sixteen, seventeen years old, uh, going into an environment where, uh, people that they share a classroom or the environment are gonna be much older than they are. I mean, kids who go to college at the age of eighteen, nineteen, after having a full high school career, they have some issues of adjustment. Uh, we have to be cognizant of that as well. And I think, uh, you know, we hear some examples of, uh, adjustment issues. And again, this, it, it, it is for the benefit of the students, uh, and we have to do a careful evaluation of what we're offering.
Can you make a suggestion as you're developing the policy? If you are able to speak with some of the students who've had the opportunity to be able to, um, just hear about what their experience has been and what it would mean to them if they were to, um, cut back? Like what that would mean for them. And Jenna, I think also, were you able to speak to what some of the ramifications might be? Like in terms of what other districts will take, allow students? I know, like, I think it was, uh, you know, school choice was right before this, so I think, um, it's important to know where they might go.
Right, yeah, so that's something, questions that I've received over the last couple of months, um, was what if this is no longer an option for Granby, um, students? And what they, I had parents ask me which school districts would allow my child to do this and have the opportunity to be a dual enrollment student full-time. Um, they're looking at neighboring communities where they could, um, they could transition to through school choice and still participate in dual enrollment, um, without any kind of intention of, of attending that specific school. So I have a feeling that, that some families have already made this decision that this is what they want for their child.
Yeah. And, and, you know, it would be great to have those conversations and share all these things with those families as well so that, you know, they understand why we are, uh, we are inclined to go in the direction that we, uh, would like to go. Uh, it's not really to hurt the future of the student. In fact, it's the opposite, to make sure that the students, our students, are members of our community, they get the best that they can get out of the school district. Um, so, um, I mean, I, I'm sure there might be some concerns around that, but I think it's a conversation to be had with, with those folks.
And I think that's why it's really important for us to be able to offer choices and reasons to stay. And, and that's, you know, that's our job. And and that's, you know, that's our job and our responsibility. But at the same time, to Emery's point, you know, we have to take the entire district into consideration.
Absolutely.
When we're.
Does this mean that there are neighboring towns that allow students to go full time or they have students full time at HCC as well? How many districts are we talking about? Is this really a widespread program now that everybody's sending their students full time?
Not not everybody, no.
Are we the largest program that does that?
No.
No.
We're not, okay. We talked about the neighboring area, right?
Yeah, we have about thirty districts that we work with, thirty high schools in the area that we serve through dual enrollment. Less than half are sending their students full time.
I just wanted to point out that one little risk because I truly believe that the reward will be much greater if we're able to develop or you're able to develop a structured plan beginning early on with very clear options for students with one course in this year and maybe two courses. And with some room for exceptions when you have that really highly qualified student who could go above and beyond. But I do think that if, once that's established, this will be a district of choice that students will be coming to be able to participate in a program like that. Because we, the only other program that we have that's really structured like that right now, well, Holyoke is pretty established just based on our work in the turnaround plan. And just starting now with East Hampton, North Hampton and Chickapie Com comprehensive.
And Renee, what what you're suggesting right now makes a lot more sense. That we would make our existing school district more interesting and more attractive for the students who would like to take advantage of something like that by offering some college level classes through collaboration with the neighboring higher education institutions. As opposed to, you know, becoming a kinda gateway to, you know, to students leaving, at least physically leaving the school district to pursue something full time at HCC.
The other thing too, those school districts are much larger than ours. So for us to lose fifteen students out of our high school population is much more significant than for Chickapie or North Hampton or East Hampton.
Yeah, that's true.
And, you know, those those students that we're losing are enriching the classrooms at the Granby Junior Senior High School or or could be.
Mm-hmm.
And and they're in an HCC environment and we're, you know, we're losing that ability for for students to emerge those classrooms and those discussions and, you know, those.
I I totally agree with you and that fifteen, to be quite honest with you, this should be a footnote, but a very important one, is that I was really concerned back in May that was gonna be three times the number. We were looking at forty-five kids. And we had a number of inquiries that I was personally meeting with, you know, family, you know, imploring that they, you know, really, you know, and Annabelle, you probably remember that because in terms of all the kids that were coming, a lot was around a bunch of cuts at the time and things that were going on that the parents were getting and kids were coming and that's why I think we really needed some policy and something in place because it could've gotten really bad.
And I think you're making a great point that probably some of these things that are going on are reflective of all the things that folks are hearing about our financial situation, what may or may not be here. When we know that even under these circumstances, we made a point of focusing on those areas that would benefit the students. So we have many more AP classes now that students can choose from. We have a variety of virtual high school options that students can choose from. So it's not like, yes, we are in this situation and we're not really offering anything, it's the opposite. We're actually, despite the current circumstances, we have been offering a lot more quality classes.
I was just gonna say, you know, there's more to a high school education than the academics. And I think at the end of the day, there's gonna be a small fraction of families that consider the academics as as, you know, the priority number one. And I don't think we can compete with that. You know, I think that we're gonna lose a certain small percentage, but I would rather see that number be three or four than fifteen.
I agree with you.
I think most people feel that they want their kids to have, you know, an integrated high school experience. The social and emotional piece is really important.
We absolutely agree with that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, separating it into, you know, one of the things that I I have heard is, well, you know, my student is all involved in hope and sad and extracurriculars and all of that. But there's a lot of social emotional learning that goes on in the classroom.
In the classroom.
And it's about how to learn, it's about how to do group work, it's about learning how to support each other when, you know, something's happened outside of the classroom that is affecting you in the classroom or affecting a friend in the classroom. And and those are all of the things that, when I hear about what makes Granby special, it's the relationships we have. Well, if you're not here to have the relationship in the classroom and build that relationship with the teacher that is so important and what people who have graduated from Granby talk about over and over again, then we're, then we're beginning to lose what makes Granby Granby. And that's, that is part of my concern. And that we perceive something else to be better when in fact it's just different.
Mm-hmm.
And so we need to grab hold of and and remember what makes Granby so special and unique. And that is that it is small and we do care about every student in every classroom every day. And whether it's the paraprofessional or the custodian or the teacher or the principal or the assistant principal, we know every kid. And Annabelle, sometimes that's not a great thing because we know every kid, but here it's a great thing. And I think that when kids come back and talk about their experiences at college, that's what they talk about. They're well prepared, they know that they were cared for here and they take that into the world. And so that's what we want our Granby students to become.
Well said.
Thank you.
Yes. Are there any other questions for Renee and Jenna? Thank you both very much.
Yes, thank you.
For your time, we kept you here for a while, but really appreciate you.
I know, I apologize, I was me, I was, you know, you could've been out of here thirty minutes sooner.
Welcome to school committee.
Yeah.
Thanks, John.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
John, you know when school, you know when dual enrollment started? About sixteen years ago, my daughter was the first one.
Here?
Check my records then. Full time.
They, she went half the day here and half the day she's. Because they had no more our classes to offer her.
And that's often where, where where we see students coming to us is that it was a, something that's not offered at their high school. It's, and there's all different ranges, one class, two classes, three classes or full load. It's really all across the board.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Annabelle. Thanks for staying. So you can be her too, Joe. Okay, that was a nice conversation, I think. And thank you for arranging that. Okay, going to old business, strategic plan and review.
If I might suggest, we have a visitor here who's been waiting.
Absolutely. Let's do that.
And with the weather starting to change.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm hearing the window here, huh? Is that what it is?
It's cold out there too.
Yeah.
Alright.
You can feel it in the air.
It's starting to get.
Yeah. Alright, let's, let's do it.
Let's do.
Hi, Andrew.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
How are you? She said a visitor, but, you know, we don't constitute.
I started in East Hampton this morning, but I did make it this year. Usually I hit both districts.
At least you're ending it well in a, in Granby, yeah, that's good.
Yes.
So if I might, before we get started, Andrew and I have been having several conversations with Mark. And I just wanna say thank you, you know, you have really gone above and beyond. These aren't necessarily easy conversations to have, but Andrew's been open. He has been problem solving every step of the way. And I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for your effort and your scrutiny and your attention to detail as we try to, you know, move through and make some changes so that we end up with an efficient and effective lunch program.
You're welcome and I treat it as a partnership. I have a number of bosses, Chartwell's people, but most importantly, the students in Granby and East Hampton, we're split between. So I I appreciate your time and and agree that there's ways we can, moving forward, you know, understanding what's behind us and what we can do to.
So is there anything that you wanted to share or should we just?
Oh, we, we had a number, you had shared a number of questions and we had discussed them. I don't know where we wanna start. Or if you wanna start a question.
Do you mind if we start with the, the, I think, monthly statement that we're getting in our financial package? Because some of the things did not really tie, at least the way I was trying. So I have a few questions. The year-to-date meal count information, that's fine, we're just adding all those numbers, that's fine. Year, let me see. Cash sales are what these students are paying for and reimbursement is through the free or reduced lunch program, is that correct?
And and paid. The USDA and the state reimburse the school department based on each meal. And one of my handouts that went out to the school committee as Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it breaks down the amounts. So even for a student here at the high school who pays three dollars for the meal, the state, if we're following all of the regulations, the USDA gives us forty-two cents on top of that. And for a free meal, it's three dollars and twenty-eight cents. So that's all in the reimbursement as far as revenue.
And that's forty-two cents is only for paid meals or is it for each one of the meals sold?
Paid meals and then reduced meals, they give us two dollars and eighty-eight cents. The student for a lunch pays forty cents towards that. And in a free lunch, we get a total of three dollars and twenty-eight cents from the state and the government per meal.
So I'll have a couple of questions on that too, after we go through this. The next section, where we say year-to-date cost and expense breakdown?
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming there is some addition subtraction going on to reach those numbers below the line?
Yes.
Forty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-four, which is the year-to-date, what what is that? Year-to-date net net product cost, is that what it is?
Yes.
So how do we get to that number? I added all those numbers any which way, I couldn't get to forty-six nine two four.
And I should, we we came up with this cause some of the other profit and loss statements, other things were kind of scattered. So we, and I can get rid of the abbreviations and.
Okay, that'll be great.
Beginning inventory is the top line and that's the value of the paper goods and the food on hand purchases. And then subtracting the ending inventory, taking account for what's now on the shelves. And then the rebates are what Chartwell's gets back from the place and the other brands that we use. And that reduces the the costs, you don't see that cost or pay that cost because of the rebates. And so the bottom line is that's what the forty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-four is the the difference from the beginning inventory, purchases, ending inventory and then a rebate.
So the addition would be the difference between beginning and ending inventory, one, right? So it's like four thousand dollars or so, let's say that is. And then we have purchases, which is sixty-one thousand dollars. That's about sixty-five thousand dollars total, is that correct? I mean, stop me if I'm mistaken.
Well, we're subtracting out the cost of the inventory.
The beginning inventory or the entire inventory?
The ending.
The ending inventory, from purchases?
From the purchases.
Okay.
Because those are still on the shelves as far as, you know, a lot of times by month or by end of the year, depending on what we're purchasing, it especially by the month. If we get invoices on, from items that we purchased within that week, but we haven't used them, we're putting that in the ending inventory and a lot of times, depending on the purchases, it might not be something for that month, it could be for the next or the the month after, including chemicals and other things.
So purchase minus ending inventory is one part of that calculation, is that, is that correct? So it's about, what is it, thirty-two thousand dollars, the difference between those two? Two thirty-two, yeah. Then we have the rebates. So how do we get to forty-six thousand nine twenty-four?
Maybe I didn't explain it well. The beginning inventory plus the purchases.
Plus the purchases.
So that's the total value of the food, subtracting the ending inventory. And subtracting the rebates.
Alright, that makes sense.
And just to interject here, because when I was talking to the auditor about this whole, you know, situation with food service and how do we arrive at balances, one of the things that he pointed out that's important is that changing balances in inventories, while they're recognized in profit and loss statements and you see them in Chartwell's results because of that, the state doesn't recognize a change in inventory as an actual expense because it's it's a non-cash item. Excuse me. So one of the things we need to be cognizant of is a change in inventory that we'll see in Chartwell's results will not be reflected on the town side results because the auditor is gonna make an adjustment for that. So that's why, you know, the best idea is every year we run down the inventory is very low because that limits the difference between what we would see looking at these each month and what ultimately will be on the town side. But as you know, some of the discussions we've had is, you know, why do we have a difference in these results versus town results? And two, the two biggest items are number one, are there stuff being charged to food service on the town side that's independent of Chartwell's? And, you know, this year, that that did happen last year, we had some pest control and things like that. This year, we're not doing that, we're charging all that to the local budget. So that's a non-issue. And then the other thing is managing the inventory so that we don't have a big difference in inventory cause that will impact the overall town side results of food service versus what we see from Chartwell's. So it's just something to keep in mind.
On the report, if I'm looking at it, the one dated December twenty sixteen, I'm going down the bottom of the, if I'm looking at year-to-date twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, if I follow it down, I see a figure of thirty-three thousand two twenty-six in parentheses. Is that the deficit?
That was the deficit before the management fee was returned to the school department. And so the deficit was twenty-six thousand.
But the one we, the one I have from you in June showed nineteen thousand one twenty-four.
That was before we closed the books and there were seven thousand more in in costs that I did not, did not know was gonna gonna hit at the end of the month. I had projections for June ending better. With the snow days and the makeup days, a lot of times we don't capture the same amount. But I was hoping through a number of things we were doing during those times, including giveaways at the elementary school, trying to keep the participation up and it didn't cover our costs.
Okay, so if I can backtrack then, you know, the issue we had was, we have, Tommy did not fund the deficit. A hundred seventy-eight thousand. Were these kind of reports you were doing, were those, are those somewhere for the, for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen? Because we never saw any of them. Where, what happened to all these reports?
We do have them, in the business office and in our office.
So how did it get to the point that, as of June, right, I have a June thirtieth, according to the auditor, we have a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, a hundred and thirteen thousand of deficit? Were you aware of the deficit being that large?
I was aware that in two thousand and nine, there was eight, eighty thousand dollars from the fiscal two thousand and nine school year. That was before I came aboard.
Yeah, but the two, I have the thing, two thousand and nine deficit was fifty-six hundred dollars. Two thousand and ten was only, then it proved a forty-one thousand, which I assume was, correct me, that was our first word of Chartwell's, correct?
I, I, I don't have what you have, and each year.
These are out of the town reports.
Each year.
In these years. So you can see our situation is like, wow, how did this go, yet we, at least at the time I've been sitting here, as a member of the school committee, had no idea until most recently of the size of these. And the position this, this has put us in as a school committee, we do not look very good.
I think from Andrew's perspective though, you know, he's, he's responsible for food service operations from year to year. And, you know, explaining results and the impacts for profitability or lack thereof. I mean, results compound over the years, you know, that's, that's, that's a whole town-school activity or lack of activity that causes that. So, I mean, I don't think it's something that we can ask Andrew to respond to, because, you know, he's like right now. He's giving us results that as of, as of this month, year-to-date is fifteen thousand dollars.
You were aware than growing, you were aware than growing every year.
The, the, no.
No?
They were, I don't know what you have, but I assume the reason the school department sought out a management company was there were losses before we arrived.
Yeah, but.
And talking with the superintendent during the two thousand and ten fiscal year. There was eight, eighty thousand dollars that were on the school side from food service deficit from previous years. I don't know if it was FYO nine or not, but that is eighty thousand dollars on that, a hundred seventy-nine, eight thousand. The next seven years, we did, and we did report losses on different years. And trying to get closer to a breakeven or a profit. During that time, we did report the losses and we did. Part of the, there are a number of things that, and each year we reported the positives and the things that hurt the budget. Some of those were when we went from waste management, picking up all of the biodegradable costs. And then the following, and then I think it was two thousand and thirteen, they shut down their, their facility in Gramby. And then food service had to pick up, I believe it was. There's about eight thousand dollars in that year. That was the same year, two thousand and thirteen, where the Department of Public Health had changed their a la carte rules. And we, since then, or a la carte was about eight thousand dollars higher in each year. Since then, it's been lower. So there, in that one year, there was sixteen thousand dollars that changed the program. The other thing to remember in either dealing with the town or just talking about the deficit in general. The, part of the reason the, the school department went with a management company or sought management companies was the cost of the benefits and the health insurance and the other things of the food service employees. Based on just other districts, even Long Meadow where I live. One of the reasons why they had gone out as well is they, they wanted, there were, I'm not sure the amount. I'm basing these figures of the town saving about ninety thousand dollars on workers' comp, health insurance, other things. Ninety thousand dollars each year that the school department or the town doesn't have to pay for those benefits. Those benefits are under food service. And as they go up over the years with different law changes, they've affected the food service budget. But there's, and I don't know what a twenty-hour-plus school employee's benefits are. But if you use ninety as a plus and minus for ninety thousand dollars each year, the town has saved that much in not having to pay those. So the, the losses that have occurred, I, I feel responsible. I've been trying to build up the program so we're not having those losses. Other districts around the, not just the state, but the nation, after the USDA changed their rules on the school lunch program, it was also harder, and we lost some participation. Participation right now is about fifty-seven point four percent for the district. The year before, in fiscal year two thousand and nine, it was on average forty-eight percent. So we are still, we did drop three percent roughly year-to-date from last year. But we've been in the sixty-eight, sixty, and now fifty-seven area, and we keep fighting to get more students, I think. Positive conversations and, and, you know, some of the negativeness around the fiscal items has deterred or dropped the participation somewhat. We just opened a breakfast, and I won't, we'll come back to this, but we just opened a breakfast program at West Street. We've served fifty students a day in the first three days we've done it. Great support from Bill and reaching out to the parents and building. And we're hoping to have a coffee hour, half an hour with the principal and myself, February eighth at West Street. And if any of you would like to come, we're sending out messages to parents, just in the, promote the program. And I look at our programs not only fiscally, but nutrition-wise, and having a good breakfast at the beginning of the day. Get students ready to learn.
Yeah, I like my eggs over-eating.
Okay. We do occasionally have egg sandwich. We'll probably have, you know, fresh fruit and coffee for adults.
So the districts that you do, that Chartwell, Chartwell's does work with, how many of them are not running a deficit?
I don't know that. I know both Mark and I looked at information about other districts. East Hampton has been up and down. They've been running a deficit for a few years. Just sharing information that I think Mark had shared with the, the school committee or. Hadley had eighteen thousand, sorry, eighteen, yeah, thousand dollar deficit. And fiscal sixteen, I'm not sure about other details there. Ledlow, twenty-two, Belchertown had a surplus of twenty-three thousand. East Windsor, a deficit of thirty-six. Depending on the year, depending on enrollment, depending on different costs that, that hit. Some of the bigger districts don't have that much. They're not near a deficit. Hoyo Chikbe, working with those directors over the years. Usually a bigger district with higher free and reduce, there's, there's less chance of getting into a deficit. Smaller districts, it's always been a fight to keep. I've worked in Amherst, Long Meadow. There's been years where we broke, even other years we lost twenty thousand. Depending on a large range of things that happen. The types of commodities that we get and whether the students like them, don't like them, being able to use them to reduce our food costs. We're trying to push that this year. I've looked, somebody, either last year or this year, brought up other districts menus. Chartwell's pretty much focuses on standards within their cafeteria on trying to get as many students to participate. You know, fresh fruits and vegetables every day, a wide variety of food choices. And other districts, some of them have one or two choices a day. At our high school, there's, there's a wide range. And if it's, I mean, we're trying to increase participation. And if we take away some of those, we might lose participation and not necessarily. We've already cut labor at all, all the schools across the district.
What is Belchertown doing to, to, to get a twenty-three thousand dollar surplus that we're not doing? I, I think we need to be asking a different question.
I think they got more students. Twenty-five hundred.
They, they got an increase in their enrollment.
So that, that, it's that simple?
Oh, no, I don't know whether it is.
You think it's that simple?
Some of it's the structure of the kitchens and the labor force at, at our two elementary schools. We only have two staff there, and they're at very lower hours than, than previously. And we're trying to provide the same service we did when, when we came in seven years ago. Same thing at the high school. We've actually, last year, as I had proposed, we had laid off one of our four-hour employees. And we're trying to reach a, it, it has lowered our, our labor. But we've, we've had to increase the high school. The lunchtime was increased, so we do have added labor that's sort of becoming a wash, but next year we'll lower our labor, hopefully. But we can, I mean, it's hard to, you know, the setup in the kitchen is so, there's two lines. And if we reduced one or didn't have students going on that side, extend a line on the other side where students would participate. So if we cut back on a service, I think the, the participation would drop. One of the things we, Belchertown, I'm not sure how old their high school is, but new. We're looking forward to East Meadows renovation of the kitchen. A lot of times with those, and a, a new building there is, especially in the cafeteria, there's about ten percent increase in participation. You know, the cafeteria and the kitchen have, have been maintained well, but it's old and it's sort of. You know, most, most new schools open up with sort of a, you know, a cafe look to them. So they're more of a, there's a number of different stations, and it's open, and it, it just feels more like college or that kind of thing. And I'm not advocating spending any more money.
Well, we don't have any, so you can advocate all you want.
We don't have a, don't have a magic line, but we're trying to figure out ways of getting students into the serving lines and reducing our costs. And I'm hoping with some of the other things we're doing and we agreed upon reducing the, or not reducing, but returning the client investment, which over the last year and a half, we've built up amount of money to re-invest into program, buy certain things that might increase participation. But because it's been such a financial focus, we're, we're going to be returning that. I'm not sure how much it will be, but that will bring us down closer to a, a breakeven. And I know language.
Can I, can I just ask a, a question? I know that the ten-minute break was a big thing, losing the ten-minute break for, especially the high school, here at the high school. Because, especially my kid was going down, getting food and a drink.
Just have the lunch program right there.
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering. I'm wondering at the high school level, how much of that has, has impacted the revenue? Because.
What was the, the first point?
The ten-minute break you said now.
Are you selling less snacks, fewer snacks, or?
We do, we do have the ten-minute break. It was taken off briefly for, I'm not sure how many months, when Peter Dufresne was here, but it is back, and we are doing fairly well.
Well, I'm confused, because I was, I was told that there is no more ten-minute break.
Can we have a ten-minute break?
John, yeah.
Was it five?
Yeah.
John?
Is John here?
The middle school's a ten-minute break, and the high school's a five-minute break.
Yeah, the five minutes is not enough time to go down to the caf. So I'm just, I'm just curious if that has impacted the revenue, you know, for muffins and, and drinks.
And, and yes, because we do have a, a full reimbursable breakfast for a dollar thirty-five. And that, we have been, had previously been doing like eighty, and now we're in the sixty range. So it hasn't affected our participation in, in that. And we're trying, I do see students occasionally with Dunkin' Donuts coffee walking towards the building.
My son comes into school every day with a coffee, and, and that was another question. I mean, you know, for whatever reason, high schoolers can't have coffee. I mean, why not?
The department.
You know, on the one hand, we're talking about, why are we running a deficit? And on the other hand, we're, we're taking away ten-minute break. We're not making it easy to, to build up the revenue. You know what I'm saying?
And we're giving your west kids to have lunch every day.
And we're getting less, yeah, so it's like, I mean.
So, so going back to that, if, we have to, I guess we put out the fact that we hopefully, that the hundred seventy-eight thousand is going to be taken care of by the town in May or June. But definitely, we know we're responsible from June thirtieth on.
Exactly.
So right now, January twenty-third, what is our school lunch deficit, starting in September? What is it?
In September?
In September right now.
Well, it's when school starts, September.
Isn't it fifteen thousand and six dollars?
That's what it is as of this month. I'd have to go back and pull. I want to say, because it wasn't around twenty-three, because we had purchases and stuff like that. I'd have to pull the list, but, I mean, this is it as of now. This is the number we're working towards, is the fifteen thousand.
And where do we plan on getting that money?
It's going to have to come out of the school budget. It's going to have to not be spent.
Do we have that ten thousand contingency that I guess did not go last year? Is that still sitting in our budget?
It is.
Is that going to that?
It's, it's gonna have to, yep.
But do you anticipate this deficit getting higher than it is presently?
I'm aiming to get it lower. And I'm, yes.
I'm not anticipating it going lower.
There's really nothing else you can do. You've already made some funds.
Well, we do have the, the funds that are going to be, instead of investing in equipment or things that we don't necessarily need right now, and putting the money back into the program. Each, each month, we, we take out a certain amount to cover investing in a program, you know, buying new, new display cabinets or whatever. Other years, we've got warmers or things like that. That's going to be put back into the program, so that should reduce, and I don't have a dollar amount, I hopefully will in, in next month. But that will go down. Plus, part of, I know the language of guaranteed breakeven has, has been an issue. And speaking to that, the way it should be described is it's a guarantee up to our management fee. Each, each month, the fee, it's the five hundred, oh, sorry, five thousand five hundred dollars from last year. It's a little more this year. So at the end of the school year, if we don't meet our, our guarantee, then the, basically the management fee is Chartwell's profit. And that will be returned to the school department. So if we can get it, you know, under ten thousand or, or less, that five thousand five hundred goes back to the, the school department and isn't given to Chartwell's as their management fee.
So is it fair to say that in the last so many years, Chartwell's has been operating with no management fee? It's, it's been coming back?
Yes, I believe one, one year, the, working with Andy and the superintendent, because of things outside of our, our control. You know, two thousand went back, or, or, I'm not sure the figure, it was a couple of years ago. So that management fee is returned to the bottom line in years where, and I think out of the seven, either all or most of it was given back to the school district, other than two, two times.
So basically what we're saying is that Chartwell is working for no profit at all in, in our district.
It's not working for anybody. It's not working for anybody. This, this is not working for anybody.
It's not working, that's exactly where I'm going with this. And when you look at it, the money that we seem to be, uh, losing, because it's a deficit and we have to make up for it, uh, through other means, is a lot larger than the fifty-five hundred or, uh, you know, whatever that amount is for management fee. We are actually really, uh, being disadvantaged by that. I just wanna clarify, um, based on your question, uh, the statement that we look every month is basically a comparison of the same time period from last year to the same, uh, time period this year.
Yes.
So the thirty-three thousand is not reflective of end of year last year. It's basically as of January, something, whatever it might be.
It was year, year to date, yes.
Year to date. It is what it is. But here's the curious part. Um, you mentioned that when you deducted the management fee, the year-end deficit was something like twenty-six thousand dollars. I don't know if you heard these numbers, but the deficit that we looked at for last year was about forty-eight thousand dollars plus last year. So when we are looking at the cost of the lunch program, there is something else, and that something else is pretty large, that is affecting the cost of this program. I don't know, I don't know what it is and we can get there. What we're trying to do, I think we're, uh, um, Deanne was going with her question, is exactly where we want to go. Given that we are here today and we know that we ran a, a program, uh, that had deficits the last so many years that accumulated and then we are now, uh, asked to make up for that hundred seventy-eight thousand dollar gap. How do we find a way to balance this program? I, I tried to be very simple at the town meeting. There are two ways of doing it and hopefully a combination of both. Either we increase our revenue, uh, or we reduce our, uh, uh, cost. Ideally, again, we do both of them at the same time, so we find that happy medium. The challenge is this, I look at some of these numbers, um, I'm trying to make sense of it and see what the, what the, uh, break even point might be. Um, it's not really that easy to find, because first of all, what we're looking at as far as deficit is not what you are looking at as far as deficit. And I know that it's not what, uh, you guys looked at as, as deficit. Everybody's looking at a different set of numbers. So first of all, we're not consistent in terms of what we call a lunch program, uh, uh, budget and lunch program financials. The other thing that I wanted to ask you is this, we're charging three dollars at the high school and you said that there is some subsidy on top of that that's coming. Are we losing money each time we sell a lunch?
Not, not every month. At times, obviously, if there's a loss, you divide that by how many meals we sell.
Yep.
And yes, you, you can say that there's a loss on each, each lunch at the end of the month.
So what, what we are charging basically, we know the moment the transaction happens, chances are we are on the red side as opposed to the black side. Fair to say? So here's the other thing that I looked at, these participation breakdowns. And, um, I'm looking at what the participation rates are for the paid program, reduced program and, uh, free program. I'm seeing that for the, uh, paid program, Granby, uh, junior, senior high school has forty-eight percent participation. Uh, we, we are seeing some nice overall numbers, but looks like the free, free and reduced program are making up for a good chunk of that, so.
If, if you look at the total meals.
Yeah.
Um, so under meals, total to the far right.
Yeah.
Uh, paid, the, just, uh, in, in this month, there's three thousand nine hundred sixty-eight paid students. And the ones below it are how many free and reduced students? So there's only eighteen hundred free students, meals.
Giving meals, right?
Sure.
We, we wish that we had so many students, but.
And so sixty, so sixty, yeah, that's per day, fifteen days during that month. So the paid, uh, meal counts were sixty-three percent of our participation.
Okay.
So they, they actually, paid students have lunch more, there's more paid students than free or reduced.
Okay. So these are, the bottom three rows are based on eligibility for those programs?
These are, are out of the students in the district that are, are paid. Uh, forty-eight percent of the paid students have lunch at the junior, senior high school. Seventy percent of the reduced, so seventeen students in the building, seventy percent of those on a daily basis.
Okay, so the distribution by?
By, by the breakdown.
By, by class. Okay. Do we know what percentage of our eligible population is having free lunches? Reduced is something else, but at the very least, free lunches. Do we know whether or not everybody's taking advantage of these programs?
Well, that's what, for, uh, seventy percent of the free students, if you go all the way down.
Yep.
To the right, the seventy percent is the free student participation.
Seventy percent.
So thirty percent is not participating.
Right.
Same thing with reduced, uh, program, which is, uh, seventy-two, which means twenty-eight percent.
So two.
Um, I wonder why. I mean, I know that there are reasons, um, many reasons, could be financial, social, whatever it might be. But th- they seem to be large percentages, uh, that do not take advantage of, uh, a free program, reduced program. Are these, are these students known? I mean, is there something in, as they line up that?
Each, each district, it, it depends whether the parents or the students feel comfortable having free lunch.
Yeah. Yeah. No, actually, I'm going, I'm going this way. Sorry to interrupt, but, uh, before I lose my, uh, train of thought here. As they line up to purchase their, their meal, uh, is there any indicator that says this person is reduced, this person is free? Everything is anonymous, right? Isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
When, when the district went over to the new two-kids program, student either is at West Streets, they pull them up by classroom, they ask their name and that's the only interaction at the high school. And East Meadow, they type in their, their, uh, PIN number, their, um, account comes up with no indication of their free, reduced. If a student prepays, which a lot of our students do, it, they hit a button and the student goes through. If they're paid, they hit a button, he goes through, so there's no, you know, he can't tell.
That's good.
But parent, and this is over fifteen years of working in school lunch, there's still, parents and students do at times feel that way. The thirty percent of the free students that don't take advantage of it is similar to other districts. It's happened and we're trying to do some outreach. A, we don't want to identify them, but we're trying to do some outreach to make sure they're aware, they have the, um, the benefit of the free and reduced program.
Don't they, they must know, because we get a packet at the beginning of the year, a free, yeah.
Every student is, every student is notified if they apply for it.
Right.
They get a letter saying that they were either, uh, approved or denied. That's actually required by federal law.
Yeah, of course.
And if they're denied, they also have to have, uh, a, a packet on right to appeal to the superintendent of schools that sent to them. But very few people are denied. And those that are pre-approved by the state virtual gateway, these are parents who never ever fill out paperwork, but it could, we, we upload the student roster to the state and then they tell us which students in the roster are automatically eligible because of, of the state approving. They are required by law to get a letter. And I think that might explain probably the big percent of those that don't take advantage of it. Because these are people who probably, if it were up to them, wouldn't apply and that's their right, they don't apply. But they kinda get rostered into it because the state puts them on it. So if they never wanted the benefit, yeah, some might say, hey, good, we have this, our kids will take advantage of it. But some might say no, because, you know, uh.
That's, that's interesting.
There's also.
But that's thirty percent. That, that, that's a high percentage of people that are not taking advantage of a benefit that they qualify for.
I'm assuming Springfield, which offers free meals to all of their students, even the paid qualified students, they're eighty percent participation or, or maybe a little higher. But there is, there's also where, where, I'm basing the percentage on the enrollment. Depends how many students, whether they come to school that day. That's one of it, whether it's two percent or five percent absentee rate, that's part of that thirty percent as well. We are doing, trying to do outreach, especially with the new breakfast programs. If they're having free or reduced lunch and participating, we want them to participate in the breakfast, yes.
So I have a question. This may sound like a silly question, but who's paying for that lunch?
What do you mean?
If it's going, if there's thirty percent not taking advantage of a reduced or free, are you counting that in as part of your inventory, in other words?
For revenue.
No, no.
Or revenue?
It's not counted at all, because it didn't have to.
Yeah, we only count it if you sell it.
Okay, I just wanted to, I, I mean, you must have to, at the beginning of the year, you're estimating your inventory based on enrollment and.
Yeah.
What was your, what did you envision for enrollment in June for over the summer?
Uh.
Do you remember?
Off the top of my head, no, it was, uh, about s- seven ninety or so.
So seven twenty-eight was way under your projection.
Yes, by seventy.
So that's, that's, that's a money factor right there.
It is.
Do, and I'll put on the table now, because people have told me, I mean, what else can you do? Do we have to consider mid-year of price increase to help with this deficit?
I mean, I, I tried to, that was one of the, uh, quick exercises I tried to do, but it's not easy to do because I don't know what percentage is really, you know, paid or what number, what number is not. So, uh, we, uh, um, just to.
But something you said though, the conversation that you just had a couple of minutes ago is generally speaking, overall, we're starting off in the red. When we, when, when a student buys a lunch, we're starting off in the red.
Yeah, so what is the, what is the point where you may not be in the red?
The more, the more same with a restaurant or anywhere else. If, if we had a dining room and we, you know, whatever our overhead, everything else stays the same. We reduce food costs and we try to reduce labor, but if you cut off seventy seats to that restaurant, they're not gonna make the same revenue as they were projecting or they did the year before. And that's where we're at, those seventy students. And I had, uh, factored those students, seventy students by our participation rate, the fifty-seven percent. If fifty-seven or so percent of those, um, seventy students, uh, had lunch each day, that'd be two thousand nine hundred eighty-two lunches as of the end of December. And if we take out, um, like, three thousand or, I factored in our, our food costs. If we factored in that, we would reduce that, that, um, sorry, participation rate times what a paid student would pay. Nine thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars, take away food costs, that equals on the bottom, the six thousand twenty-two in revenue that we would have had with more students. The three thousand was, uh, due to added labor at the high school. So if we didn't have those two things happen, we'd have nine thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars towards that fifteen thousand loss. So we're a lot closer. If we can do some other things, positive, drive, drive sales, which we've been trying to do, then we have more meals and that, that deficit per meal, it, it goes a lot lower. It's, you know, two cents instead of, uh, thirty-four cents.
I like the cost side. Do we know what drives our cost?
Our cost, um, yeah, it's, I mean, there's a number of different costs. Labor cost and labor cost is, um, you know, we've reduced that and, um, it's pretty static. Food cost, it depends on, on the month, um, you know, and what kinda commodities we get. And if I can't get in the commodity, the, the chicken or whatever that a student would like and buy, then I have to buy it from Cisco. And if those chicken or beef prices go up, usually it goes up about three percent a year, depending on, on, on the year that, that drives.
If, if you're affected by the min, the raise in the minimum wage?
Yeah, um.
But see, here's the thing, all restaurants are affected by all these things, right? And if a restaurant ran in a deficit, six, seven, eight years in a row, they'd be closed.
Then we, then we pay more for a meal when they raise a meal.
Either that or they would be closed, right? They'd close the restaurant. If the cost exceeded the revenue, at some point, they close the restaurant.
Right. Right, that's right. They always say there's too many restaurants.
Exactly. So we have to look at.
It's the only one.
And maybe here's a way to look at it, I mean, simplistically. So if you look halfway down the page, the average check is three dollars and twenty-two cents. So that's what Chartwell's takes in per meal. And then if you look at the average cost per meal for the different costs, net product cost is a dollar seven. Variable, I mean, that can fluctuate a little bit depending on what you're using. Hourly labor, not gonna change, same hours really go into making the food. Salaryed labor, not gonna change. Other expenses probably have some variability to it. So that's three dollars and fifty-six cents per meal. So you're losing, as Andrew said, thirty-four cents a meal. So you're le, the only leverage you really have in this equation is either some change in your products, depending on if you get commodities, or increasing your average check by getting more people to come in and purchase meals.
How much are we, do we know how much we're wasting? How much are we throwing away?
Food?
Food.
Uh, actually, I, I can, yeah, I don't have the figure, but we actually measure it each day at the high school to help our staff, you know, they burn something, something's left over. You know, it goes into a, a measuring device or the peels of the carrots or whatever we do. And we have actually compared to previous years, reduced that.
I was wondering, do you get a meal count?
Not here.
So wouldn't that help you? I know, but wouldn't that help you?
But it's, it's hard for, for, yes, it would. We use production.
Otherwise, you're just guessing and you must be, there was a lot of food.
Just like a restaurant, um, we do try to utilize whatever we, we can. At the end of the day, uh, if it's been out and served, we, we wouldn't. But on our, um, grill side, part of the reason why.
Yeah, but wouldn't the meal, but wouldn't the meal count in the morning even help you in terms of preparing the food?
Yeah, we use a thing called a production record, which the USDA actually, and Chartwell's has this used. And we use it every day. We write down how much, what kind, and it's supposed to, actually, the nutrients are involved in the production record. So when the USDA comes in or Department of Education, they know if I'm getting, we're getting forty-two cents on a paid meal from the government to, you know, prepare a meal a certain way, we are. So we have those records and we look back. Last month on Friday, we served meatloaf. Okay, we only, we produced sixty portions and we only served forty-eight. Then we cut it back. So we try to, it's an educated guess. And what we do on our grill station is towards the last lunch, instead of just making twenty hamburgers or twenty quesadillas or paninis, we, the last, they, it's more customer service, we're, what would you like? And we, we actually, and it's reduced cost. A lot of times, uh, the vegetarians will come in at that time and we'll make them either cheese quesadilla or another type of veggie sandwich in a panini press. So that has, we, we do try a lot of things to reduce the cost. Part of, e- even the analysis, I know the eight-year, uh, hundred seventy-eight thousand, um, is a big number. It's a huge number. But as with the eighty thousand, if you trim off the, just thinking of what my responsibility has been or, or Chartwell's, take off the eighty thousand from the hundred seventy-eight and you divide that by seven years. I don't know, I wrote it down before, I don't have it with me. Is it roughly sixteen, seventeen?
Was that Andrew? I didn't know we had to do math.
Sorry, uh, hundred seventy-eight, hundred, uh, thousand, hundred seventy-eight.
One seventy-eight minus eighty.
Yep.
Minus eighty thousand divided by seven.
Fourteen thousand.
So on average, our program for the last seven years has lost fourteen thousand dollars a year. And that, that's significant. I'm not happy with it. I've been working towards reducing that. And moving forward, if we can get this, and I'm hesitant to say, yes, we should raise the lunch prices yet. I think we still have, I mean, it, it, obviously, it's on, on your side. I don't wanna, um, you know, drop participation by increasing. But if we increase by a dime, that might get us there closer to there. But if a student is paying three, three dollars and ten cents for lunch in February, I don't know if, you know, that might push them off getting it or if, if they see the value in it. And that's what we've been trying to do, is have them see the value in the, the cost of the, or the, uh, price of the meal. And the value, I mean, I want the school department and the town to see the value of our, our program with, again, it's not a, or, uh, it, it's a guess at a number, I, what you would pay for a, uh, benefits. But if you were paying benefits in two thousand nine of ninety thousand a year, add that up over seven years. add that up over seven years and, and that's pretty substantial cost saving for the town. The town might be pushing this hundred seventy-eight at you, but if you, you know, multiply the, the ni- ninety thousand a year, the choice of the school department going to a management company has saved the town ninety thousand dollars a year. There must be a line item somewhere that shows the difference between two thousand and nine and the last seven years of there. I know um health costs and, and all the other taxes that go up and down. So it'd be hard to find exactly what the cost savings are. But that's something you might ask the town and, and say, well, the school department did this for you. Where, you know, verify it, you know, don't take my word for it, but verify it and say, this is a cost savings that the school department has done for the town. Cause I assume the benefits and the health insurance don't come directly out of the school department budget, do they? Are they paid by the town?
We get, we get, we get in kind.
Yeah.
Costs associated back to that.
I, I, I think we all understand wh- what you're telling us and there are, there were obviously, or hopefully, some benefits to having a management company uh for lunch services or meal services, that's understood. But at the end of the day, what I'm hearing, I guess, is this, there's really no way right now to run this program without a deficit. And not only that, uh, we are, we are basically creating a narrative to make uh the forty-eight, fifty thousand dollars that we have seen last year deficit uh palatable. But there is really nothing palatable and this is not, this is not, I, I mean, i- i- some other town may be able to really say, you know what? Fifty thousand, pocket change and take it. For us, it's, it could be a class. Cause it has to come from somewhere else and it has to go into lunch program. So what we're trying to understand is this, again, going back to what uh Deanne was saying earlier. How do we dissect this into smaller pieces and start finding out where we can save, where we can increase the revenue? Um, one example let me give you is this. I went and checked the menus of many towns around. When you go to, say, example, Belser Town, South Hadley, and you know, whatever other ones that, that were on my computer until recently, you just see one page almost for the month. When you go to ours, it's a nice thing, but it's basically the, the, the one day goes the whole length of the column. So then I started wondering if students in these other districts are okay with those, you know, two, three options or whatever they had, can we really uh not make it happen here? I mean, it, the, are we even considering that? We have to s- start looking at our alternatives. So it's good to have this, you know, what we may call world-class service, but if the kids are not taking advantage of it. If, that's why I'm asking, what portion of it, what types of meals are getting thrown out at the end of the day? Do we have a record of it? Are we really trending it? So we can find a way to say, you know what, we are really thoughtfully going after this and we are trying to reduce the cost by not hurting the meals, but eliminating the waste in our process. And I can guarantee you, this is uh speculative, but you know, based on uh what we've seen so far. There is a lot, and I know that you guys are trying to do your best, there is a lot of waste in that process. There's a lot of waste in that process because no process is without waste to begin with. Number two, in, in food services, if it doesn't get used, it gets thrown out. And when we have so many options, what I'm wondering is, is that leading to some of the waste? And is there a way to gauge it? Is there a way to look at it? And the other side may be, okay, you know what, if we have uh the meal service here, is there a way to generate some additional revenue? At the end of the day, if the answer is gonna be, and continually so, that there is really no way on earth to make this program deficit-free, we can do a few things. The top one is, okay, we're just gonna accept it. But as I mentioned to you guys before, we have to know whatever that deficit projection is upfront and it has to be part of our budget. We can't really hurt the educational budget by finding out at the end of the year and trying to allocate money from education to, to meals. Or we say, this is not working for us. I'm being very honest with you. And because we cannot have a six-year cumulative deficit of hundred eighty thousand dollars, we don't even know what the town's gonna vote uh in, in June. They may just say, you know what, we'll just, we'll stick it out and we're not gonna give you the money. And it's gonna, it's not just hurting us because it's holding, holding up uh free ca- free cash that was gonna come this way. But the argument is getting to a point where we cannot make our case. Because year after year, they are seeing that there is a program here that is losing money, rightfully so. They're asking us, first of all, how come you didn't know about it? Well, we didn't know, but now we know, as uh Jim said, now that we know, we have to do something about it. Uh, I don't know what it is. We're looking for your help. We're looking for everybody's help to understand what are the areas we can look into to reduce and uh if, if we can, and hopefully we, we will be able to, eliminate that, that deficit. Um, but I, I have to tell you, I mean, th- this conversation is only uh telling me that we can justify the deficit, but it doesn't really give me a good feeling about any alternative that may help us reduce it to a point where we're uh breaking even. Is it fair to say? I mean, I'm not saying this criticizing you. I'm just telling you what the facts are, what the reality is from our perspective. This is an unmanageable program if we're gonna have fifty thousand dollar deficit a year, which was the case last year.
Those, those numbers are not, I mean, Mark can speak to, i- it's not, those numbers are on June thirtieth.
Right.
And there's other things that Mark has more details on that bring it down to the, the dollar amounts. So it was a, a.
Right, the discrepancies like I talked about were, you know, in two thousand sixteen, the school was charging things to the food service, revolving account, you know, like the pest service, Heartland, which was the point-of-sale system.
Couple of thousand dollars more. I mean, they're not, they don't add up to.
Six thousand dollars, the amount that did not hit the, the school department. Four point six thousand for, for those things. Six point five thousand that had not hit the school department uh bank account because of a clerical error with the invoice at the end of June. And then ten thousand point nine thousand for the inventory, bringing us from that original forty-eight down to the twenty-six. Those, the forty-eight take away the four point six, take away the six point five for the uh uh giving back the um management fee and an error on the invoice and ten thousand point nine thousand dollars in the inventory, which increased and the value was, was utilized and being utilized this year. The, the town doesn't see it on their bank account, those three items, but that goes the forty-eight down to the twenty-six. So the, the deficit was twenty-six. At this year, this time last year, December, at the end of December, we were thirty-three thousand negative. And we, we got a little better and then we got back down to a, a negative uh at the end of the year. At the same point, this year, we're fifteen thousand dollars in the hole. No, we're not at zero, but we've, we've managed to get from thirty-three with some cuts and we do utilize waste control um and production records to, you know, we might have ten items left over, um, and we utilize most of them. Say if it's a hamburger that hasn't been handled, that's gonna go into taco meat or something. Um, you know, and so we went from thirty-three thousand December two thousand and fifteen to a negative fifteen thousand. So there are, we are trying to get there and I think we can get closer to it at the end of the school year. Uh, again, three hundred forty-seven students between two thousand and nine and two thousand and sixteen have, have not been in, in the district. This past year it was seventy, other years it's eighty. And, and it's been hard to, with the structure we have in the kitchens, reduce labor cost or other things. And so our, our, that's not the reason for, for all the deficit. The fifteen thousand, part of it's labor, part of it's um, you know, trying to reduce the, the food um cost. Uh, you talk about waste, we, we went from a dollar twenty-three food cost per meal to a dollar seven this year. A lot of it is trying to utilize similar things that the other school districts are using. Uh, commodity um chicken, um bone-in chicken. The elementary schools don't usually like that or, or eat that. We're not gonna do that there. But it, it's not as popular as a, a breaded chicken nugget or something, but we're doing more of those. Uh, when our, our chef was out uh two weeks ago, I made meatloaf. And we didn't uh, we didn't uh have too many leftovers cause we handed out samples both to Officer White, who came and had a, a lunch with us, but to some of the students and they came and had the meatloaf. We're utilizing the ground beef from the, the commodities. So those things and if you're, you, we can trim some of the things off, off the menu, trying to reduce some of the higher uh uh meal costs. Um, you know, purch- purchasing, you know, a Tyson breaded product or using a commodity uh raw chicken product is cheaper. The students don't necessarily always like it. We try to make it as, you know, to their liking. Some students go for it, some students don't. A lot of things change year to year. Um, but anyway, I don't. So the forty-eight isn't forty-eight. It, it was twenty-six and um.
Okay, just to, just to cut you off there. Are you clear with that?
There are, I mean.
Because this is where we get into this communication issue that they have a this figure, somebody else has this figure and then the, the ends don't meet to say, we all agree with that.
We're close because what it is on the town side, it's the revenues that come in and the revenues of the revenues in Chartwell's will report them.
What do you mean we're close? What does that mean?
Meaning that where we, where we're off is in the inventories. Because the change in inventories, which will appear on the P and L, will not appear in the town results. Or they're accounted for in the town results, but they're not, they're not, the state will not count them because they're not considered cash.
I thought inventory was, is just the most recent thing, cause Chris Martin asked for an inventory. Inventory wasn't factored in before.
I saw, I saw the accounting that.
Even in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, we'd report it to them. I'd give them the actual inventory sheets.
So when, when you, here, here's the question we were grilled upon. When there are discrepancies, are you, do you, do you attend to those or just let them go? I have the feeling that they've just been let go. This is mine, this is what they say and no one straightens them out. And I think that's what got us here. And I could be wrong, but no one ever talks about, well, this is what I say, you know, and this is what you say.
I think Andy over the years has, has pushed on it a number of times, including the eighty thousand from two thousand and nine. And that's been kicked down and I don't think it's the school department or Andy necessarily. I think he's brought those things to their attention. And I'm not sure, oh, I haven't been at all the meetings, but I, I was aware of tho- those things. And um as far as going forward in reporting them. Other than the ten thousand dollars last year for the change in inventory, we're, we're on, on all the other dollar amounts. So if you wanna take the twenty-six and say it's thirty-seven, then that, but it, it's not forty-eight, it's not fifty-nine and it's not, and it's not a hundred and seventy-eight. Hundred seventy-eight is over the last eight years. And eighty thousand of that has not been part of our, our program that's going on now.
But let's take, let's take the last year and, you know, I, I agree with Jim. This is where we get lost. As a school committee, um, if I can say it in the nicest way, we, we really don't care at the end of the day what the accounting uh conventions are on the state's side or, you know, your side, your side. All we know is, when the auditor came to this town, and I will go with your number, I will take the four thousand out because it was the uh whatever, the badge system or whatever system we call it, the, the uh, the card system and then the uh, uh pest control, add them together, we said it's about four thousand dollars. Take it out of the forty-eight that the auditor says we have as deficit, we're still not able to explain the forty-four. So I, I, I hear you, you're explaining it your way. You basically, you know, took some numbers out and all that stuff. It's probably what you see. And you say we're close. The town sees forty-eight thousand dollars and the state says, this is what you, what you have to balance for us to release your free cash or you find the money somewhere else and take it from the schools and put it somewhere else. At that point, I guess our, again, just our reaction is, hopefully it's not, you know, disrespectful to you guys, we do not care. We honestly do not care. We want to know, is there a possibility for us to speak the same language? So we see fifty thousand, fifty thousand, fifty thousand. Okay, now we know what the magnitude is, we can solve the problem. What we, we can't even do is, we have twenty-six thousand, right? Just you said twenty-six thousand? Twenty-six thousand, whatever thousand, and the town is looking at forty-eight thousand. So we, there is no way for us even to start addressing the problem because we don't even know the magnitude of the problem. And folks are watching this and they're probably saying, you know, a bunch of whatever, uh, they can't even come up with the same number, let alone balancing their book. And that, that, otherwise, I am all good. I, I, I can understand and I can appreciate, empathize with your uh stress levels and all that too. Probably it's not easy for you either. But really, I feel more frustrated each time we do not have the same numbers to even begin to solve the problem. And that, that is, that is a big concern. If we did, if we had some breakdown, I appreciate that we're saving stuff, but we don't know whether, you know, students, I don't know what it means to have Tyson chicken, for instance, versus commodity chicken. It means nothing to me. If we've surveyed the students and they said, you know what, I can't tell this is Tyson versus whatever chicken and you made the decision, it's good to know. But we have to have some facts to be able to build our narrative that is really something that we can share with the town. Right now, all we're saying is, we have a program that is losing money, we don't know why. And you actually just said something. You said, hey, you know, there must be a reason why you switched to us. Probably you're right. There must have been some reason. I can't imagine that for no reason, somebody said, you know what, let's leave this program and switch to that program. But we don't even know the narrative around that switch. I mean, we just, you know, you're just nicely trying to explain to us, this must have been, right?
Thousand in benefits would be a carrot for the town.
But do we know that for a fact?
Uh, that dollar amount? No. I know the town's saving eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand in benefits for, for.
That's water of a dam, but I can't believe it would've been ninety thousand. There were not that many employees.
There were thirteen in, in, okay.
Anyway.
Whatever the, the average cost of a, a twenty-hour, thirty-hour employee is for benefits, I, I assume that can be, but anyway, that, I didn't make the decision.
No, no, no.
I answered the call and I'm, I'm trying to get us to a break even.
Yeah, well, you're basically catching us on a very uh now contentious uh.
I know, I've, I've heard of the eighty thousand and then the growing every single year. Rose when she goes to the uh town offices, every month is, is, you know, poked on it. And it's, it's, again, if you look at the minus the eighty thousand, it's fourteen thousand dollars a year that we lost on average. And, and that's not a hundred, I mean, I'm looking at year to year. Each year I rectify with the school department on, on our numbers. I, I give Chris and, and Steve their information and I assume other departments have gotten a check or whatever the six point five thousand for um the, the, um, sorry, the um, not before June thirtieth. They got it in July because there were issues. And that does have some weight with other departments, I assume. If something, income, we don't get, this, we're not always gonna line up with the town because on the end of June, we still have uh students that are, are, have money on their, uh, negative balances on. It's not a lot, it's about a thousand dollars. But there's also, um, whether it's catering or other things, we're never gonna hit it, it directly on it. By reducing the, the inventory by the end of this school year, which I'm, I'm uh trying to do, we won't have that ten thousand dollars where they're pointing a finger and saying, no, it's, it's not twenty-six, it's thirty-something. And hopefully, not hopefully, but it's, it's under ten thousand. We give back the five thousand, five hundred in the uh management fee and we have it in a reasonable situation. and we have it in a reasonable situation, the six thousand, four thousand loss. I can't guarantee that, but I'm working as hard as I can to do that. We, we don't have substitutes. If we're out somebody, I come in, I work. I'm usually not in the office that much, I'm using it either here. Part of the reason why the school department, I assume, also chose to, uh, go along with East Hampton and do a, a bid together was to split it to director. I know, um, after David did a, a very good job as food service director, uh, to cut costs, the Ramby had, uh, their business manager actually act as the food service director. They hired another person and, and things were, didn't go, go too well. And so they went into this, and they're saving about fifteen thousand dollars in, in benefit sharing. I mean, I'd rather be in one place and focus and, and give you, I'm already giving you sixty, seventy percent most weeks, but, you know, giving you a hundred percent. But we have staff doing that every day, Rose, working, anyway. I'm, we're aiming as close as we can get to a break even. Lot of obstacles for school food service. Um, I still enjoy the job. The students here, over the last seven years, have, have eaten healthy or healthier meals. Each, each year, we were focused on, you can't put a value on that, but that's part of what the, the food service program is there for. Cost savings that, that might not be realized. Nutrition that should be realized, and I think a lot of parents do. But I'm committed to getting us, you know, below fifteen thousand towards what, what I had already talked about. And having a positive, I know the town and our staff even, half of, over half of which are residents, and, and their friends and parents of, of students have heard a lot of the talk of the, the amount of money that's been lost, and it's been presented like we lost it last year. This is an eight-year thing, and it's part of their perspective is wondering if they're gonna have a, a job in the spring or, or not. Um, I, you know, other, uh, management companies might bid on the program. The last two cycles, the three-year contract, nobody did, other than, than Chartwells. Um, and going back to self-op is when you realize that those thirteen staff members, uh, the benefits would have to be paid by, by the town. So the deficit of, you know, fifteen now would be higher, um, based on the benefits, um, that a twenty-hour person would be. So anyway, each month, each.
I think to Emery's point, um, the larger point is that we, we don't know how to solve the problem if we don't truly understand the problem. And trying to wrap our head around why we're losing even fifteen thousand dollars at this point to date, it, it's, it's, it still feels like a mystery to me. When I look at these numbers, I see all these numbers, and it's, and it, at the end of the day, it just seems like a mystery. So it's hard for us to tackle this and, and say, how can we solve this if we don't really understand it? Is it right, and, right? I mean, we don't know, do we, do we raise the cost? Do we add more programs? So, cuz it doesn't feel like the conversation we're having is getting us any closer to being able to say, yeah, that's what we need to do. I, I feel just as confused now as, as I did at the start of this conversation. And I'm not, that, that's not on you, that's, that's on all of us, you know, it's. And yes, it has taken us eight years to get to this point, which is even more frustrating because we've tried a bunch of different things over the last few years. And we still keep coming back to the same place, that we're losing money every year.
So I don't, I don't know, I don't even know where to go from here, but, uh, I guess at least you know what our concerns are. And, uh, we have to come up with a better way of, um, managing the financials. I don't know what that means, to be very honest with you, that's all we know. I mean, we either increase revenue or cut costs, whatever, and we have to break even. At the very least, we have to have a reasonable forecast that allows us to budget the amount that is the real, uh, meal budget. Right now, we're not doing that, and that's, that's really one of the things that is killing us because we budget whatever we think is the budget, and then at the end of the year, there's a deficit. Well, it's, you know, that has to come from somewhere, and that is becoming a big challenge for us, Andrew. So we have to, one thing that we can probably offer you is this. Whatever you tell us, whatever you share us, as suggestions, everything is valid. I, you know, you, you may think, hey, you know what, I don't even know if I should share this. We are open to all suggestions. The other thing that is not helping us is, really, we're talking about the problem. Granted, we don't even know the magnitude of the problem, but we're talking about the problem. We, um, we're not talking about, right now, for instance, we did not really have any concrete conversation around any piece of solution or anything that can get us closer to that. I know you're gonna probably start looking at that. Let's just have that conversation. Otherwise, there is no way the revenue's gonna go up, or the cost is gonna go down, or we're not gonna know about it, so we can share with the town. And we're gonna find out sales in June, that's what's gonna happen. If you wanna join us, feel free. Uh, people are gonna say, how come? How come, you just, you told us this, and you told us that you had a path, you had a, you know, you were gonna create a process, which we are committed to doing. But if the process is not really, uh, based on how things are done, because we don't know, we can't even fix something. That's why we need your help, to understand how we do these things. Where are we spending most of money? Where, where do these students have interest? How we can increase the number of, uh, sales? How we can reduce the cost if, you know, there isn't a way to decide? And I can tell you, I, I have to believe that in every process, there is a way to reduce cost. Let's just talk about those. Because, you know, next year, we're gonna have the same conversation. You will give your nice explanation as to why your program is advantageous to us. Fine, from your perspective, you know, that, that, that's good, that's good. But for us, again, it's, it's gonna be a time when we're gonna have to explain to the town why we have such a deficit in the program. Let's just try to solve this. There's no, I, I can, I can tell you this much, there is no way around it. We have to find a way to solve it. It can be any one of these possibilities. We say, you know what, hey, we're gonna have to eat it. We did not, we, we cut a good chunk of the technology budget. Now we're finding out that we have deficit in our, uh, um, meal program. And I don't even know if we can put anything back in there. So if we're gonna be in the same situation every year to take something away from that is related to education again, I mean, that's probably the essence of it, and spend it on the lunch program, it, that's, you know, that, that can only go so long. We have to find a way to show that we are doing something meaningful to reduce that deficit.
One thing that came out of this that I think is pretty crystal clear is that we're losing money per meal.
Yes, we are.
Thirty-four cents per meal.
And mine was rhetorical, based on what you guys already, uh, shared with us, that it was shown there, that we are losing money each time we make a sale.
Same as last year, and same as two thousand and nine.
Yeah, so the challenge was this.
So, so we, we, we raised the prices last year.
Yes, we did.
And we're still losing money per meal.
Yeah, but on top of that, we even talked, uh, I don't know if anybody, uh, shared this with you. We said, okay, should we consider another increase in prices? I mean, uh, i- if we can remain reasonable, yet, you know, say we raise it a quarter, you know? That's, that's, that's the amount that we came up with and just threw the quarter thing. Even if you raise it by a quarter, it doesn't make up for the forty-two cents per meal, uh, loss. And that's a challenge. We have to go fifty cents, as, based on what we know today, not to, not to lose money.
No, we can't, we can't have a deficit because we're losing thirty-four cents every meal we serve. That can't be the simple.
Well, that's, that's a big driver of that.
That's the math, that's the math of it. It, we're losing, we're taking in less than we're spending.
Or how was it in other community? Regardless of how many people are eating a meal, paying the same price, how are they losing money? How can they be, that's the way, how, everyone would follow the same path, regardless of how many kids eat. I know you talked about the restaurant, but how many kids eat? The pain is the same amount, they're paying less than, they're paying less than we are.
Because there's certain costs that are, are fixed, and over that certain point, if you have more revenue coming in, those fixed costs, the cost for the, of the labor, are not gonna change. So you can make more money because the labor's gonna stay the same, but your revenue's gonna increase.
We, we cut a four-hour person, we laid them off in order to save eight thousand dollars this year.
Are we gonna continue with the agenda?
From September to June. Currently, we, we would've saved, as I, I noted here, we would've saved, um, three thousand, six hundred, forty-five dollars. The time for lunch was changed by a half an hour, and that has, has cost us, uh, cost us. We, we were saving, we, we made a plan to save eight thousand dollars a year by increasing the lunchtime and increasing labor time by a half an hour for each person at the high school. That ended up being, um, costing about three thousand, two hundred, thirty-one dollars for this year. So we would have a, a three-thousand-dollar savings, and therefore that fifteen would be twelve, if, if there wasn't a, a roadblock to the, the savings. Um, if we served, again, I, I won't go over it again, but if we do serve more meals, with our, our costs being similar, I had factored it out to be six thousand dollars if we had fifty-seven percent of those seventy students eating with us every day. It would've increased the revenue, and I already took out the, the food costs. So with more students, and I, you know, I, I can't find more students. I will cut costs further and try to make, um, increase our, our participation with the students we have. But if everything was the same, we'd be nine thousand dollars better off. So under, under, uh, well under ten thousand. So we have been, every single year, doing stuff to increase participation. The new, new things, uh, new menu items. We have a, a, a pretzel roll that's going pretty well here. We're trying to drive participation, but each year, we've hit roadblocks and other things. And it's not an excuse, it's not the bottom line, but we have been doing things. We have been reducing waste, we have been cutting costs. To go from one oh seven to a dollar twenty-three in food costs is pretty substantial. And we're, we're gonna keep going forward doing that. I will look at, right now, uh, we ran a report for the USDA, which has us, um, other years, we brought it up when we had, you have decided to increase meal costs. It's called, um, paid equity pricing, and it's making sure the, uh, USDA funds for the free and reduced don't compensate for a lower. I think one of your questions in an email was, how does, uh, South Hadley have two-seventy-five lunch? They've, they've kept theirs low for whatever reason, and now each year, they've increased theirs by a nickel. Um, the other, uh, last year, I think it was fifteen cents for, for, that we went up. And I'll, right now, the paid lunch equity is not, we're under the threshold. So a, a lunch increase would be the school department's choice. Uh, one of the other questions was adult food costs. We haven't had an increase on that, but we are charging three dollars and seventy-two cents for an adult meal. And that's based on, some people wonder why it's higher than a student price. We don't get reimbursement for the, uh, adult, and we have to pay sales tax on, on their meal. So it's, it's three seventy-two. Some school districts are as high as four, that's something we can consider. Uh, we do have fairly good adult participation, that might keep them away from doing that. I'm, we can project some figures on that for our next meeting.
Okay. So, um, let, let's just keep this an ongoing conversation.
Yeah.
So hopefully, you know, you know that our frustration is primarily with where we are right now financially with the program and not personally directed to you. So let's just work to see how we can improve this, but please keep us up to date. If you wanna be on the agenda, tell us that you wanna be on the agenda. Help us understand where we are making improvements, what we're changing, so that come June, we don't just, you know, stand and cannot explain what improvements we're trying to make or we have made.
Understood. And I'll have the, the monthly reports for Mark, and if I have something else, report, good or bad, I will ask to be on the agenda.
Thank you.
I don't know that, you, you being first helped, you're right. I was hearing the precipitation, hopefully your drive is not too long.
About a half an hour, but.
Yeah, okay. Drive safe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Have a good evening.
Good night, thanks, thanks, Andrew.
Mark.
Emery.
How you doing?
Great, how are you?
Oh, awesome.
So financial results on Friday.
Let's just do financials and be done with that.
Yeah.
I thought that's why you're asking me.
Yeah.
I kind of assumed that was a gentle segue into, into FY seventeen.
By the way, there's, there was something here that said food service contract. Were we supposed to talk about that with Andrew?
Well, D and E, D and E, um, both the contracts are coming, um, up.
Food service contract.
And bus.
And bus.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, so we'll talk about those two.
Quick discussion about.
Yeah, cool.
All right. So financial results, um, I posted on Google Drive the results through December for both the local budget, and the local budget at this point is at three million, seven hundred, seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred, ninety-two dollars and fifty-two cents expended. So that is fifty-one point nine percent of the budget halfway through the year. So, um, as a general thumbnail sketch, you know, the budget is on track being halfway through the year and halfway expended. However, you know, as Carol shared with you at the last school committee meeting, and as we know, we have a couple unanticipated, um, placements that are coming into the district that, all things being equal today, would put the budget over budget. Um, so obviously, we've instituted a, a spending freeze, as we said, to try to help to address that, and as we also know, we're looking at a fifteen thousand dollar food service deficit that has to be covered as well. So, you know, there's a couple of things that are putting pressure on the budget right now. Those are two of the major ones. Um, so obviously, to get through the end of the year with those additional costs, I mean, obviously, I know there's a discussion as to whether or not, you know, we look to the town for coverage for those additional expenditures. And if we don't, that would have an impact on the budget as it, as it stands. So although, you know, at this point, it looks pretty well balanced through the course of the year, we know those costs are gonna come into play, you know, as the rest of the year unfolds. We also have the grants, um, because now that we have the grants fully entered in, um, we have the grants with their budgets and their expenditures. At this point, I'm circling back over to payroll because once grants were approved, we started putting the payrolls in. But we need to go back in and back into the payroll as it would've been from the beginning of the year. So as you look at the payroll numbers for salaries, it's a little bit unexpended. We have to, we have to true it up with the results that occurred prior to the grant being set up because we're paying from here forward, but we gotta grab the amounts from the approval point back to when school started.
Accounts are frozen?
What?
Are there accounts frozen?
Well, basically, the way we look at a, a hard spending freeze is that every pay request that comes in, um, is it doesn't involve the health and safety of the children and the district. So we look at everything that way. You know, there's basically POs come in now, and I'll sit and have a conversation with Cheryl, saying, okay, this has come in, but do we really need this? You know, how much of this do we really need to make sure that we're, you know, we're managing the budget and we have sufficient funds to make it through the rest of the fiscal year? I'm also, I've also been working with, with Nancy because as we have this budget entered in, and as you know, this is a budget that got consolidated a lot from last year. So there's, there's accounts where things are getting spent out of cuz they traditionally did, but we're not necessarily funding. So there's, there's accounts where things are getting spent out of because they traditionally did, but we're not necessarily funding them. Like if you look at nurses, you can see that we have expended on each nurse line, but we have one nurse budget in East Meadow because we don't have a district nurse line. So we need to kind of create these lines and move the expenses there because from the Desi's point of view, there are no school nurses in terms of reporting, but we still have the old school, you know, way of putting it per school that, that will, you know, we hit some of these each time we get together, we clean them up and, and get the expenses put where the revenues are expected to be based on the consolidation that happened with the budget from last year to this year. The other thing I've been doing is I've been reaching out to the town, um, the town manager to get some of the revenue information. So he's provided me some of the information on grants that come in because one of the things about grants now is some of them are at a point where you're not able to see the revenues because if they're in grantium, you didn't see what came in. So just to make sure we can true up what our assumption is of revenues that came in with the town's assumptions of revenues that came in, so that we have this process that we're communicating and we agree. So, you know, we're going through, through that process now.
Why, why would we care what the town's assumptions are? And I'm not saying this in a derogatory way, but if we budgeted so much for grants, if the numbers don't match ours, it means we are off, right? So why, why do we? Because the town doesn't have a school budget, we have a school budget, why do, where is that in town?
Because if we're expecting that we have this much money coming in and requested, we wanna make sure that the money actually came in and hit the town's books.
So we wanna make sure that you get whatever it comes in and whether or not that number matches whatever.
Right.
Because we don't, we don't get the grant money directly.
Right, it goes to the town.
Okay, so that's, that's good. Thank you. So the, how many students are we talking about who returned to our district?
Uh, I wouldn't wanna misspeak, um, but since the beginning of the year, I believe there have been at least three tuitions.
I count at least two plus some program changes which
Right.
negatively impacted us because they weren't, they weren't part of the original sped tuition budget.
So they left the district?
No, they, in other words, we budgeted for the number of kids who are coming in and as of last month, we've had students who have joined the district who are now at tuition expense that was not budgeted for because they won't hear.
And students who were thought that they would return to programming and then didn't. So they remained out of district at, um, at a different tuition rate than we anticipated.
Is that also special ed?
Yes.
So these are returning or just coming to our district late, moving to town or something?
Um, if they're, if they're moving into district late, then the sending district will, um, encumber that cost through the remainder of this year and then we pick up next year. It's more students that have moved in prior to, Carol would know the date and I apologize, somewhere.
April first is usually the date where you don't have to worry about owning the student.
Right. Um, so, um, we also have students that have come into other programs. Um, ELL is a program that we talked about, um, needing to do some hiring around. And essentially, as I said, we've had students that, you know, were budgeted for having returned to the district but did not, um, maintained their tuitions out of district that we're working with through, you know, the IEP process and placement process and working with families, but they did not return.
And are those students that were, we were counting on coming into the new program?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. That's disappointing.
But on the other side, we had some students.
And we had more students come back, they just weren't tuitioned. So.
Well, that's the stuff out of our control.
Yeah, I think that's something that we need to talk in the next section hopefully quickly, but this type of, uh, funding, especially special education, it's completely unreasonable. And, you know, the state knows it probably, but they just let everybody deal with the problem as opposed to them taking a stance. And again, just, you know, you talk to every person, even those who are reasonable individuals, elected officials I'm talking about. When it comes to these things, there is no solution. If a student was not budgeted in a, in a school's current budget and they come in especially at a very high tuition level for special education needs, we're not gonna say no to those students and they know that. But there is no way to help that situation. One, number two, the first thing that the governor cuts is the circuit breaker for anything that we need for education, uh, special education needs.
And our circuit breaker was reduced by twelve thousand dollars, so that's, that's twelve thousand less than was budgeted for in the original budget. So that's another thing we're factoring into the, to the overall potential.
And, and it was a tight budget as you remember.
Yeah. Do we know when we're gonna have the governor's budget out?
Should be this week, yeah. Should be tomorrow, I think.
Okay. Oh yeah, joy. Um, so what, what do you, uh, just to make sure, where are we right now as far as dollars? Are we?
I mean, if we.
On a path to break even again or?
If you, I think if you factor out the tuition, um, and the additional staff that were required, uh, for other programming, um, yes, but
Yes.
On track.
On track, okay.
But the tuitions have put us potentially over and it's concerning.
Do we know by how much? Where are we right now as far as our, our projected deficit?
Our projected deficit would be around seventy-four thousand dollars, but that's again assuming that, you know, every, every line item is expended, is gonna be expended. We know we're gonna expend salaries, it's the non-salary items, which are not a huge part of the budget, but that's the part we're managing with the freeze.
Does that include whatever may be the deficit from the food, uh, lunch program?
No, add that fifteen thousand to it or potentially ten thousand or what have you.
Yeah.
Those lines, some of those lines are gonna have to stay frozen until June.
It's, it's not unusual when you have, you know, sped tuitions come in, sometimes that happens.
Yeah. How are you doing? I didn't look, because I didn't see one of the lines. I know seventy-five thousand dollars was budgeted, you did twenty-five by each school for substitutes. How are we doing on substitutes? Is that gonna be a savings in those lines?
So far, it's tracking pretty low. I gotta, it's easier for me to look if I can do the search on subs, but.
Because there's some, I see in here that some people using some sped accounts also pay for some subs or professional development or something, so hopefully that will.
Yep.
See, East Meadow with the twenty-five thousand has only expended forty-five, which, I mean, I just, I dance when I see numbers like that because usually, this is where you start getting concerned that you're more than fifty percent over. Uh, ten thousand at, at the high school. Where's West Street?
Because there's more teachers here too.
Right.
West Street is around four also, I thought.
West Street was, West Street's at sixty-three. So all in all, not bad.
Alright. Anything else?
Just, just because I wanted to ask, I know you went to this new different subsystem which I guess I hear different things. Maybe some people don't wanna call into it, that's why.
Aesop, is that what it is?
Aesop.
What is, what is that? What do we, what is that costing us?
That was, was it sixty-five hundred? I gotta check the budget hold on.
Plus PD.
But there was an upfront investment, right, then it goes down?
Mm-hmm.
Right, you pay that, it's a setup basically to set up the account.
And how's it working for us?
I think there's some benefit and there's some learning curves, um, particularly with, um, managing the day-to-day and where that responsibility is falling. And then, um, at, at central office, um, I think working with David, um, managing some of the settings so that, um, teachers can, or any staff member who's using Aesop can, um, call in after the fact. What I'm seeing is Mary Cool putting in an awful lot of, um, requests because it's gone by and teachers can't go in and fix that and correct that, so it's actually on my agenda to speak with David about. So it's, you know, like any new program, it's, we have some learning still to do, um.
Was that a one-year or is there two-year contracts on it?
I believe it's a two-year contract. Uh, so Aesop, which is the call-in, get a sub portion, it was eighty-two hundred dollars this year, but four thousand of that is the setup. So going forward, it's about forty-two hundred dollars in the second year.
Anything else?
Alright.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Okay, do we need to do anything with the bus contract?
No, only that we're moving forward, we'll bring up more information next time.
Is that gonna be as planned in conjunction with other towns? So we can reduce the cost, is that still the intent?
Yeah, what, well, what we're actually looking at, because it, sometimes it goes both ways. You can either A, save money because you've got a, you've got a, um,
I tried.
A bunch of bus companies together, so you, you are a more attractive, um, you know, audience for bidders. Sometimes if you're, if you're a larger audience, you exclude people who would be willing to bid. So the bid is gonna be written both ways, so that you get a bid as the, the towns that go in together and an individual bid, so that people can bid on either. So at least for that, we can wind up getting the best rate for, for Granby because we'll get either the individual one, which will be better, or a collective, which will be more beneficial.
And we're work, we're still working on which one's gonna be, okay. When are we gonna bring this back? Because probably we need to, when, when is our contract expiring?
June thirtieth.
So we have to.
Yeah, so we wanna be putting on a bid soon.
Alright. Alright, so we have the strategic plan in review, so we, we're gonna have a conversation with Dorothy. I was hoping that Jen would be here because, uh, uh, she, you know, she had some interest in helping with some of the items we've been talking about. Let me just list the four items under, that I thought we could have some time to talk, but we can do it next time. Uh, one, one is the community, community reach out and that includes, uh, creating some, uh, channels, whether it's social media, blogs and all that to make sure that some of the things that we mentioned in fact tonight are, uh, shared with the community. So everybody knows what is really, uh, going on in the school, uh, district. But this is mostly, what are we talking about is mostly from a, a school committee perspective to begin with. So we're, we're gonna share everything that is related to policy, state level news, impact on us and all that. Everything else, you're already doing some of that. Blog, probably we can, uh, collaborate on the blog, but that was one thing. The other one was, uh, creating a communication process for financials, which we told everyone that we would do. Not only that, we have to document the, um, the process itself. If there is an interest, I would, I wouldn't mind sitting down with, uh, you know, Mark, Cheryl, uh, you guys and create the draft and then we can share it with the committee, then approve it, and that would be our process and we need to document it. We promised everybody that, that was in progress. And I think we should do it for more than just this. Our processes should be documented, especially if they are critical. Uh, the third one was a thought around community, community forum. I don't know that we have any face-to-face time with, uh, community members, whether it's parents, school community or folks who would like to chat with us on any one of these things. Uh, can we in the next month or whatever, uh, two, uh, have a forum open to people so they can come in? I don't know if you guys would like to have something like that. Uh, the last one is.
Budget time, I, I, I'm.
Well.
I'm a little questioning of the timing.
Why?
Well, I don't know, we're kind of rolling into budget time and, you know, we, we've got a lot on our plate right now and you wanna do that right now?
Not right now, but I, I don't think it's either or, next month. Uh, and the reason for that is this. I'll, just like, uh, Robin said earlier, unless we keep folks, uh, involved and, uh, informed, then we're gonna have a budget that we're gonna share with people, they're gonna see it one or, once or twice and then we're gonna say, they're gonna say, okay, we really didn't have anything, uh, uh, during the process to be able to chew on it. That's my concern, I mean, just to continue to, to share as much as we know with folks and make sure that they get the opportunity to ask questions. Nobody may show up, which happened last year, three people or so showed up. But doesn't matter, just, we should probably open that, uh, channel as a, for communication.
So can I clarify?
Sure.
What you want the community forums about? Do you want community forums about?
Come and meet the school community, uh, school committee and ask questions around, uh, things, primarily probably it's gonna be budget. So it's not, it's not a public hearing.
Ask Emery.
It's not a public hearing, but it is, it is us sharing what we know and they get to ask questions and they may not be hearing whatever, uh, they are curious about. I think we have to create that connection, just, uh, we've been talking about it for the last couple of years at least and, you know. I, I agree with you that it's budget time, but, I mean, what, what time is good for us really? Every, every time there is some other, uh, obstacles and I can understand that it's a lot of time invested in these meetings, but.
Another way to gather it and I was, I wanted to say thank you to the community, um, I sent out the superintendent entry plan survey and got a lot of responses. So there are at this point, um, eighty-five responses, um, from the community and that really only went out to school, um, communities. So my intent is to try and head over to the senior center and, and hand out, you know, um, cards with the website on it and the link on it. Uh, so that is another way, I think, to get people who might not be able to come to a forum, but at least to give them, uh, space to share, um, their ideas and their thoughts. And, and the comments are fantastic, you know, they're thoughtful, they're, um, it's not just people filling out the, you know, the Likert scale. It's, you know, full-on, Cheryl, you're doing a really good job with this, Cheryl, you really should, which is, you know, for a lot of people, that's how they can get us information.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. No, thank you for doing that, I think that's great. Um, and probably have to, we're gonna have to do a lot more, uh, of that kind of reach out in the near future. But that's a great, great start. And the last thing that I have on this list is, uh, scheduling meetings with the, uh, select board and finance, finance committee that we talked about. Whether or not, uh, they receive well, we, we should reach out. Because it seems like we're still, you know, on some things at least, we still aren't on the same page and for sure, we're not communicating well.
Well, I think it's, I, I also think it's important to, to maybe verbalize that at the, you know, at that special town meeting, we had no idea that the, the finance committee was gonna get up and, um,
Nobody had any idea of that.
Not, not being in favor and as a professional courtesy, um, I don't know, I, I was really disappointed in that.
Yeah.
To not have them reach out to the superintendent, to the chair of our school committee, to, um, have any discussion to gain more context around the school lunch deficit and to just get up, um, and unilaterally um, be opposed to the vote, um, I was just very disappointed. And again, demonstrates the lack of communication. And it just feels like we're not working as a team.
Well, and I, I don't have any more information regarding what to present. Uh, what more needs to be presented? Um, all I know is that this is gonna be brought forward later. Um, but there's no discussion about, um, how to inform the town, um, regarding the issue. Um, what's missing in the conversation so that people can make an informed decision. It was basically left on town meeting floor.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I could use some direction, um, whether it's from, uh, the finance committee or the select board and you folks around, um, how to move forward so that the community has the information it needs, um, to make a decision and to vote, and it's not mixed into, you know, what we're doing around budget seat, budget time, which is something completely different in terms of moving into two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah. And, you know, leading conversations like that with really no guidance or, uh, direction, that's not good either. I can appreciate that, that's not a policymaking body. Regardless of what it is, uh, in this town, if we're gonna, um, we're gonna talk about not communicating, uh, not focusing on solutions, uh, it has to go for, for all committees and all boards. Uh, you know, we can't just say what's not working, we already know what's not working. Uh, and having last-second curveballs did not help. In fact, you know, I, I tried to tell everyone that that vote wasn't really our vote, it wasn't our budget. It was something about free cash, if, you know, they decided to withhold it, that's, you know, that's okay. But we could have been in a better position to explain that deficit, which could have helped them as well. Uh, I don't know that we had that opportunity because we never had the conversation.
We didn't have the opportunity.
No. We did not. We did not, so anyway, uh, but, but one thing that I will say, uh, I know for a fact that I will pursue. uh, I know for a fact that I will pursue this last one, and I know that we will, much more vigorously. Uh, having meetings, at least proposing those meetings, because we're not gonna go to a town meeting, not having offered everyone the opportunity to come and, uh, visit with us and ask questions. Uh, and, you know, if, if we don't get the response that we need, then at least we would have tried. I, I don't have anything else.
I'm good.
Uh, the policy, hopefully the policy meeting is on, as is, all right? So that's good.
What's, so what time is the next meeting?
Which one?
Six o'clock, we, we switched to six.
Why?
Because, um,
Where was I?
We have no policy. We thought that folks would prefer to start at six. If you wanna go back to six thirty, I'm fine with that.
I'm at work, I, I, nothing's changed with my schedule.
Okay.
Well, some of it was changed because the, the policy was supposed to be the hour before.
Right, the policy meeting is not there anymore.
Well, I, was this the meeting that I was not at?
No, no, we decided on this, uh, a while ago, we've been meeting at six o'clock, you actually came to our six o'clock meetings.
That was Wednesday, I came to the six o'clock meeting because it was a Wednesday.
Okay, so maybe that, that wasn't a misunderstanding.
So it was one meeting. One meeting was at six o'clock.
Just before we go on to the next thing, just because we're gonna get into the budget, I think, even though I think I have an idea, but I think,
Lordy.
especially in light of, um, hearing about fifteen kids in the high school who are basically not here. And I think we need to revisit, you know, our enrollment again in terms of kindergarten. Give an example, like kindergarten is twenty two kids or forty five kids and there's two teachers. So that's fresh in my mind as we look ahead to next year, like, we were talking about cutting fourth grade teachers last year, put twenty eight in a room. You know, now they're moving forward now, we need to know, it's not twenty eight, but what is it? All these numbers, particularly the class sizes in the high school, middle school, you know, just to pick, a music teacher is eighty, eighty percent, works with X amount of kids, broken up into fifteen classes a week or something or other. I think we'd better get that out there again, because that's gonna come up and hit us again. So I think that would help us as we look into making some decisions, um, early on. Because, you know, I heard what Robin said, you know, I would assume that the, when you meet with your leadership team, they've gotta be talking with the staffs about, you know, here's where we're at people, you know? And they, they know as well as we do
Mm-hmm.
what numbers are, am I gonna keep these teachers, how am I gonna put in a room? You know, so that gets them involved in the process too. So we're all on the same page, we're being transparent, you know, on top, you know, so. I think that would be helpful, um, for everybody here.
Yeah. So, agreed, we should be proactive and we should, you know, uh, think about some possibilities. But, um, I did not mention because two of our members are missing, but I will just throw it out there. And as the last item on this strategy section, and I shared this with you, uh, Cheryl earlier. We should have targets that we think will, um, will help us hold our ground and then potentially make improvements. And one of those targets can be and probably should be related to our enrollment. We're in January, we're especially for, to target something like that, we're not in a bad place. So, we may or may not achieve it, but if we make keeping the enrollment where it is, if not better, next, uh, school year, uh, we can start working on some things. We can proactively go out and ask questions, who is not getting whatever they wanted? Maybe you identify some gaps here and there that we can address and then communicate. That's why the, all these things are interconnected. Um, you know, we can't just do communication for communication sake, what are we gonna communicate? We have to find those things that are not clear and that are not clearly communicated to the community. Uh, and I think, uh, if we're gonna have a target, I would go with keeping enrollment at, at, at the very least where it is today, if not better next year.
Yeah, and there's a couple of different ways to look at enrollment. You know, you can look at the percent of resident students that are enrolled with you. Um, I think as, you know, we're at eighty nine, something around eighty nine percent, that's low.
Hmm.
Um, from a high, um, just in about two thousand and ten of ninety six percent. Um, and what you can see when you look at enrollment is that's not unique to Granby. Although Granby's f- f- fall, if you will, their decline is greater and steeper. Um, but you see a decline in most of the areas in Western Mass. Um, so, I mean, I can ha- I will have those for you, um, and, you know, to have a very rich discussion about enrollment.
Yeah.
But to pick the right number, um, to set as a target.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, um, okay, so, you know, it's already late. There's a lot to talk about, um, uh, s- let's just plan around this primarily next time.
Sure, yeah.
About strategy related things. And I know that, uh, some of us are interested in doing some research into some of these topics that pop up, like regionalization, this and that, let's just share all that.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, I know Jen was gonna share her findings around, um, some regional schools, district now looking to split or some schools trying to get out.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So trends are not really consistent anymore, so let's just have conversations around those. Uh, do we have a, um, actually, I would like you to share one part of your, uh, superintendent's report. The, 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 the bottom part, please.
Okay, um, I apologize, I shut that down. Uh, so for my superintendent's report, um, sadly, I would like, uh, to take a moment to remember the life and work of one of our educators, Mr. Jim Dunleavy. Uh, kind, compassionate, funny, engaging, dedicated and inspiring are just a few of the words people have used to describe this wonderful educator. We were deeply saddened by the passing of Mr. Dunleavy, although we are grateful for his work and service to his colleagues, students and their families. I'd like to say thank you to the entire Granby community for your support of the schools during this difficult time. And to let you know that we are planning a memorial in the near future and will share, uh, information with everyone as that becomes available and we create the, uh, committee to do that work.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay. I didn't wanna wait until next meeting before that.
No, I, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we have, uh, executive session tonight, do we? It's listed here, I don't know whether it's just, uh, standing item there.
Oh, my god. I think we should table, given the weather.
Okay, let's table that.
Yeah.
Do we have anything pressing that needs to be discussed tonight?
Thank you.
No.
Okay, so let's just, uh,
No.
table it. Okay.
Yeah, that's what it is.
So with, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Jim?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.